Please take a seat. The August 2nd, 2023 Planning Board Meeting is called to order at 6:32. This is to advise that the revised notice of time, date, and location, the extent known agenda of the subject meeting was prominently posted in the public place reserved as such with similar announcements on July 26, 2023, and transmitted to the Times, the Princeton Packet, and the West Windsor Plains Borough News on July 26, 2023, and filed with the Township Clerk on July 26, 2023. Please call a roll.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Laverro?
Yes.
Mr. Schichtel? Mr. Panko?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Bari? Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jivers?
Here.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hoberman?
Here.
Chairman Karp?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you. I will open it up to the public for comment on non-agenda items, limit 15 minutes total, three minutes per person. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and this is on non-pending, non-open applications. Okay, seeing none. I'll ask, we discuss the meeting minutes of July, June 14, 2023. I'll ask that if there's any punctuation or typo corrections, just give them to Cindy, and so we don't waste time on that, but if there's context issues, we can discuss. So anybody have anything they want to talk about? I'll add some stuff then. Under Chairman's comments and correspondence, the last line of the sentence where it said Chairman Karp would then give it to Mr. Surtis or Mayor Morata, can you add something like that? If outside of the planning board prior to discussion with the chairman? So there's some context there. In other words, I'm not saying, "Don't hand anything out." I'm saying, "Let's talk about it first, and then I'll let you know that, yeah, it's okay to send out because..." Okay? You can word it, you get my meaning, right? Okay. Also, on the last line of page one, just to make it a little clearer, to describe the terms in full rather than use acronyms.
Thank you, Michael. That's courtesy of Curtis. You captured it, Michael.
Question, I have a question on page three, under Terza Woman's commentary, first line, FWW, what does that mean? I'm sorry? Okay, if that's the case, please spell it out. I don't know. If that's the case, please spell it out, and then parentheses, FWW. And there's something else. I think that's all I have. Anybody else?
Motion to approve the June 14, 2023 minutes with corrections.
Motion by Curtis. Do you hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Simon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions for people that can't vote? Sue, abstains. And Mr. Patel, you're going to abstain, right?
I was, yeah, I was.
You're absent, okay. Thank you. Motion carries to approve. Okay, liaison reports, Environmental Commission?
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't attend meetings, and the commission for the last few meetings, so next time.
Okay. Table F, next time, portable housing, Joytko's not here, so.
I can fill in for that.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, there was no meetings of portable housing in June. The next meeting is tomorrow night, and also they'll be discussing under new business review the newly proposed 400 steps submission.
Okay, thank you.
That's behind Ellsworth.
Yep.
Sam, on that, is 400 steps really changed, that it would come back to this board for review?
Oh, yeah, they're increasing the unit count from 140 to 180, and what the board approved, I believe, were four buildings, coming in with one building with underground parking and four stories of residential above that.
Okay, so it would be coming to your bench?
Brand-new application.
Okay. Next on the agenda, application PB 23-03, West Windsor Arts Council minus site plan in both variances, 952 Alexander Road. This is West Windsor Arts Council, long-term tenant of property known as 952 Alexander Road, an approximately .668 acre parcel. Opposed to build a covered porch for the rear of the building, renovate and expand the existing shed, and install six-foot-high fence around the existing exterior mechanical equipment. A variance is required for maximum improvement coverage, where 70% is permitted, whereas 66.4% exists and 68.3% is proposed. Jerry?
Mr. Chair, proof of publication and service are in order, and what has your?
Thank you. Is the application represented?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dino Spadichini, on behalf of, on behalf of the applicant this evening. Chairman did a wonderful job introducing my applicant.
Yeah, I always steal the thunder of everybody, sorry.
It's okay, Mr. Chairman, I do want to say, first time back in this room, it looks a lot more welcoming and warm than it had previously, so well done whoever had anything to do with that. So as the chairman said, the application you're going to hear before you this evening is for West Windsor Arts Council, some very minor improvements in the site, a covered porch, an expansion of a shed, but in addition to that, in working with your professionals, we've had an opportunity to address some of the stormwater that went with it as well. So we think, all in all, it's a win for everyone. So with that said, I don't know if you want to swear everybody in, Mr. Muller, one time, or how you want to do it, and we're only planning on having our engineer testify, but we have our architect here as well, and we also have the executive director here as well, answering questions.
We like to swear everybody in at once, it goes quicker.
That'd be great. Stand up.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth? So sworn, couldn't you go around and just state your full names, probably last name?
My name is Cameron Corrigan.
Cameron Corrigan, I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey.
And how do you spell the first and last names?
First name is C-A-M-E-R-O-N, last name is C-O-R-I-N-I. From Roberts Engineering Group.
Great, everyone, the one thing, Chairman, I don't know if you pointed it out or not, but the applicant is a tenant at the property, and the township actually owns the property. I don't know if you pointed that out, but I just wanted to put that on the record.
I did not.
So it's an interesting dynamic. The only other thing that I wanted to do before we get started is go through the reports to make sure I have the most recent ones, the landscape architek plan is dated July 25, the planning report is dated July 21, fires dated July 25, and engineering is dated July 25, I believe that's it. So with that said, I'd like to call our first witness, Mr. Corrigan. Cameron, I'm going to give you this, but I'm going to ask you to see your qualifications for the record, education, license, how long? County press work.
Is your license current?
Yes.
Okay, any issues? Accepted.
You can keep that, Cameron, so, you know, starting point, forty, let's go through the site, what the proposed improvements are, and I'll call for any maintenance, and sure the board will play.
So we're here. That's from the plan set, I take it?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, this is the plan entitled Minor Site Plan for the West Windsor Arts Council. July 10, 2023. Been previously submitted to the board for consideration.
Can you call that as well, Mr. Muller?
Yes. Yes. If you could mark that.
Yeah.
As we said, we're here to present an application on behalf of the West Windsor Arts Council to make improvements to the site located at 952 Al Road. This is tax block 75, lots 6, 118, and 119. The site is at the intersection of Alexander Road and Scott Avenue. See along the top of the site plan, Scott Avenue along the right-hand side. The site is adjacent to a commercial lot to the west, that is the front of Pizza Site, obviously Township right-of-way to the north and to the east, and a residential lot to the south. Just for reference, the site was the old Princeton Junction Volunteer Fire, so same facility that's been there for quite some time. Now, the improvements have been briefly mentioned, they include construction of a new six-foot-tall privacy fence along the southern property line, that's the common property line with the residential lot, an expansion to an existing attached shed, the shed is on the southern face of the existing building, proposing to expand it by three feet towards the southern property line. We're also proposing a new covered concrete patio directly east of that shed. First patio will be closed, so it will not have any key or personal lighting or adding any lighting to this.
All improvements are along the southern face of the lot.
It's all on the side of the residential lot. Meet the requirements for major development for limited disturbance and new impervious coverage. The existing building collects stormwater runoff from the roof by way of an existing gutter line along that southern property, or a southern face of the building. Some of it goes towards the avenue, the rest of it goes west, towards the commercial lot to the west. That corner, where it's moving to the southwest of the corner, is the... When stormwater runs to that corner, it's going down, it's just a downspout, it's hitting the ground, and it's typically running overland and encroaching upon, that's the commercial lot to the west. From any future. So with the building expansion that's proposed, we will be providing a new gutter line along the southernmost point of that building expansion, that's going to collect all of the roof runoff from the expansions that are proposed, it will also collect some of the runoff from the existing roof line as well, and enforcing all of that runoff east along that southern face towards the existing parking lot, towards Scott Avenue. All contained within the existing site, which is owned by the township, and also directed towards Township right-of-way at Scott Avenue. This is, we think this is ultimately, because it's taking some of that stormwater runoff that's created on the site, keeping it away from the surrounding, we want to take with it, township.
I believe those businesses who were early on had recommended that alternative means for getting stormwater, probably a drywall of some sort, so, or something we consider we could look into it.
However, there are a number of constraints that really don't lend themselves to a drywall, specifically, they are soils on the site, the site has soils that are categorized as class D. Really no significant or appropriate structure around the site that would connect and overflow it. Drywall, if it did overflow, it's just going to overflow overland and not into any of the existing infrastructure, which would just cause a pounding issue around the site. And finally, the building itself has been prone to flooding at the lower level, if you have water seeping into the building, so we feel that installing a drywall somewhere on that site may have that issue, which is the final reason why we are not considering installation of a drywall. Is that we have met with a number of township professionals, township engineer representatives from the works of the township. In agreement that the proposed improvements are beneficial, and they are appropriate considering the strengths that you have, as I said.
I do have one follow-up. So we're also seeking a waiver this evening from a burning requirement in connection with the site, and they blew their own during part of the discussions, again, it was really the process we had. The fault was, it's such a tight site, the best utilized is space rather than burning up from property line and in, where you'd just be eating up space in order to create that burn, in fact, was the best alternative for privacy purposes, so we do need waiver from the permanent part, but that is a solution.
That's correct.
You mentioned there's water that's getting into the basement. Is there really measures being taken to correct that problem?
Not under my...
We can have, we can call them up now or wait until Cameron's done, whatever you prefer. We can make it interactive, it's okay.
That's fine with me.
Okay. Careful, careful.
So, oh, my name is Island Green, I'm the executive director at the Arts Council, and we have a couple measures in place, there is a French drain around the edges of the basement to capture water that does seep in, and we use a dehumidifier, actually, a couple of dehumidifiers in the basement, but even with those, we do sometimes get water seeping onto the concrete floor in the basement.
Is it sweating on the walls, or is it actually puddling?
Sometimes it puddles, and, you know, it depends on how hard of a rainfall it is.
Wait, do you have any some bumps?
Do not.
That might happen.
And again, testimony, and Mr. Corrigan can certainly answer, is, we believe that the recapturing, if you will, or reorienting the stormwater will hopefully help with this as well, so, and attacking it a few different fronts, just to add to that.
What about the engineer comment on that? Maybe someone could look at that.
Ian, I'm going to swear, and I'm going to swear David in as well, and Sam, I'll swear you in as well. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give the truth? Just say your full names for the record.
David Novak, N-O-V-A-K, International Planner with Burge Associates.
Okay, you were responding to Linda's question regarding board management?
Right. What they're proposing to do will, this will be allowed for a game areas of foundation, it's not going to correct any interior problems they have, if there's a rest of the foundation involved in the reference side.
All right, so your testimony is that the patio addition, anything else is not going to affect?
That's our testimony as well.
You're saying that the downspout, then, from the southern exposure to the roof will drain into the existing parking lot, that will then drain into Scott Avenue, is that what you're saying?
That's right. So a portion of the roof runoff already goes through that parking lot, we're redirecting a portion for the southern half in the same direction.
Would it make sense to put some kind of underground pipe that would go out to Scott Avenue, or Alexander, or wherever, instead of just collecting on the surface of the parking lot?
We looked at that as well. The difficulty is, so there's two ways to look at that, you could use a perforated pipe, which, you know, just constantly pour water, it's wherever you're trying to move it, but then you're really draining the drywall in the area, which is kind of frowned upon nowadays to the new stormwater. The other problem that we have is that the existing stormwater infrastructure on Scott and Alexander, the best way to describe it is funky, it doesn't necessarily make sense, there are some boxes, it's engineering, there are some inlet boxes that just aren't connected to the rest of the system in that area. And I know that personally, because Alexander Road was under construction about two or three years ago, Roberts Engineering Group was involved with that design, we worked closely with the engineering department, we know there's just not a great system to connect to, we don't want to make it worse by forcing more water by piping it in.
So three years ago, you didn't correct that?
Yes, we corrected what we could.
Yes.
The rest is funky, they did what they could, the rest is funky. They couldn't fix funky.
Cross my heart, feel free to speak to Frank or John Talon, that's the engineer.
Okay. Any other testimony?
Sure, we don't, but as we said, we have Island here, we have our architect here, James Moran, it's really a covered porch with, you know, shingle roof, there's not a whole lot of architectural components, but we're, it's up to you, whatever you prefer.
There's a fence, yes. Can we go to one end, same height, straight across? Look like there's two fences, one's lower and one's higher.
Yes, so a new split.
But when you go there, there's a fence, I don't know if this is, that's lower, and then there's a fence that's higher, by the park, you know.
That's right. Just as Dino was saying, in front of it, will be connected.
Please talk into the microphone.
Sorry. Fence. So you will not see that the neighboring fence that is on the residential lot.
What's the material of the fence?
Of the new fence?
Cedar. Cedar, okay, so it's like, what, a 25-year lifespan, or?
Plus or minus, cedar is pretty resilient, as far as timber fencing goes.
Okay.
Existing split rail fence is going to be behind your new fence?
The split. Yeah, that's right, split rail fence is yours, I believe, correct, we've had conversations with the neighbors, yes, that's their fence, so you will not see the split rail fence from inside our property.
And the split rail fence is going to be on your property?
No, it's on their property.
It belongs to us. Okay, the cedar fence is on your property?
Yes.
So it's up to them to maintain the property.
And just so everybody understands, the township owns that property, and they have an agreement with the Arts Council to lease the property, so it's owned by the municipal government.
So the township would maintain that along with it?
I don't know what the leasing, I don't know what the agreement is with the Arts Council on maintaining the structure of the building. I know nothing about any of that.
It's kind of a leasing agreement.
Is the money coming from the fence, is that part of a grant?
Yes.
And the township will then?
So I believe...
So our agreement with, this is Island again, Director of the Arts Council, our current lease, under the current lease, the township maintains the facility, but we have a partnership with you, and we've, you know, we've gotten this grant from the State Arts Council to make improvements, capital improvements, so this fence is part of that agreement, future maintenance, under our current lease, it would be the responsibility of the township, but we also are going to be, you know, creating a new lease soon.
Yeah, I mean, we are just extending their lease year by year, and we were waiting for this project to be, they applied for the grant last year, right? So we are hoping, once the grant is finished, the council will vote on the new lease, and all those things will be included in the new lease.
Treaties?
No, no, all the, who maintains what, who pays for what, will be included in the new lease, yeah.
And you're, I'm sorry, you're not, I know you're not going to burn, are you planting along with the fence at all, or you don't have any plans?
Currently, we don't have plans just to maintain the grass that's there, we use the backyard for classes and camps, so we like to have an open space. Yes.
These fences are pretty maintenance-free, you can put them up unless something falls on it, it stays there. I have a steel fence.
I guess Jivers had another question.
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
Have you been using it for events? So what?
Not events for?
Mostly for classes, we, in the backyard, but primarily to be for classes. We do at times now, so it's possible, you know, a few times a year.
Is there any cuddle hour for when we have cool events?
Our events typically end between nine and 10 o'clock.
We've imposed conditions, in terms of our preparation before, I think the board has the power to do it, obviously, it's a separate question whether it wants to.
I totally agree with Mr. Muller, I have to say, though, I think it'd probably be better to make that all-encompassing with council when they go to do the lease agreement, but again, we'll do whatever the board wants, but I would think if, you know, if it's going to be, all right, let's revisit who maintains the fence, let's revisit this. It's up to the board, but I would think... Of course, no, no, and, no, and we totally understand that as well, my only thought is, I guess I don't want to do something here that the council may disagree with as well, I mean, council's ultimately going to get the final bite of this apple. I'm sorry, the lease? Well, yeah, but the lease is a pretty powerful, pretty powerful tool, being a landlord.
Yeah, I mean, currently, the lease has no restriction on usage, or I don't think the lease refers to any usage whatsoever, the lease just refers to how much level they would be.
Look, we'd be happy to discuss a cutoff, but again, you're pretty powerful as a landlord, I have to tell you, so, but we're happy to discuss a cutoff, it doesn't, whatever you prefer.
I think the council and during these negotiations, in my opinion, right?
In my opinion, right? Commercial properties don't have to come up with eleven or midnight lights that last up. They're saying they end between nine and 10. Let it, let it be negotiated and decided, you know, the council's counsel on the lease.
I agree with Michael.
Can I just ask a question about the lighting? You said no new lighting? How can you use now or patio? Are there existing lights?
I apologize. I was going to correct Ken. Only new lighting will be underneath the roof of the the new roof that will cover the patio.
And they'll be shielded from?
Yeah, so there'll be, there'll literally be high hats that come straight down. There's no new wall packs going on or new, no new pole lights.
So that allows you to work till nine or 10 o'clock, right outside?
Yeah, so that literally underneath. So if you have the overhang here, it would be in there.
Any other questions? Let's hear from our professionals. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to go first or?
Good evening, everybody. For the record, this is David Novak. Any issues left in our memo? Again, this site is located in R-1A District, along with pretty much the rest of Marion City. The African's willing to request an improvement coverage. So right now, the improvement coverage is at 66.4%. With these improvements, it was raised to 68.3%. This board has addressed that, or just as a little reminder, there's two ways to look at a variance in terms of positive criteria. Physical features test, where we need to look at whether there's exceptional narrowness, shalliness of the shape of the property or topographic conditions, features affecting this property. Reason of extraordinary condition affecting a specific piece of property that warrants the need to factor itself. With C1 test, the physical features test, we're looking at whether or not there's something very unique or odd in that lot. Board can also look at variance through the C2 lens, which is the public benefit test. Ranking the variance will advance the intensive purposes of the municipal land use law. And the positive will outweigh the detracts ranking that variance. In that, the board still needs to address the negative criteria, where we need to look at whether there's a respect that makes of good substantial mechanical intent of his own land. Regarding the planning review on A5, just a brief recap, did discuss the core area of this building PRC process, based on the improvement that you're doing, specifically the expansion shed that was mounted towards the site and they are, because we've got the shed being used as a kiln project that may use purposes. So there's no S.A.R. variance required with this application. If there was, the board would not have jurisdiction, that would be going in front of the zoning board to adjust it instead. Yep, touched upon the porch. I think I just touched upon the shed, from my understanding, it's being utilized for kiln. Fencing was discussed, and we also discussed the existing development. Otherwise, I do not have too much a legal master plan that is located in the Marion City land use category. That corresponds to the R-1A District. The 2020 plan notes that there is a disconnect between the existing development pattern there and the existing zoning. We, the R-1A, refers to the use of coal and area requirements of the R-1C District. That district establishes a minimum lot size of one and two thirds acres for conventional residential development. Does anybody want to take a guess about how many residential lots in Marion City meet that minimum lot size acreage? Zero. So the zoning of the area does not quite match up with the existing development pattern. One other thing to consider is that the West Windsor Arts Center was discussed in the Community Facilities Plan that was recently adopted in 2022. That plan made reference to the strategic plan of the West Windsor Arts Council, which identified even more capacity, various ability upgrades. There's also a recommendation to eat that strategic plan of the Arts Council to renovate the backyard area. So that was something that is at least examined during the master plan process.
He gave a question for you on your page four. Number one, it says 0.67 square feet, eight acres there?
That should probably read 0.67 acres. I would, 0.67 square feet.
That's kind of tiny. Okay. Anybody? Questions for David? Thank you, David.
Ian Hill, standing in tonight for Fran Guzik, the township engineer. There's a couple of items on page two of the memo dated July 25, 2023. Comment 1.01. As discussed previously, the outside space is going to be unenclosed and unheated. If that were to change and it were to become enclosed and heated, it would be counted as new floor area and additional variance would be required. So it should just be put in the resolution that if they are not permitted to enclose or condition the space. Under comment 1.02, they discussed the, that they're not providing any exterior lighting except for downlighting in the roof of the porch itself. Stormwater, we've discussed under 1.03. A portion of the roof area that currently drains towards the pizza place is now going to be redirected back the other way and away from that. And the additional impervious coverage that would have historically run to the south to the adjacent residential property will also now be directed to the east and out to Scott Avenue. And finally, 1.04. The proposed porch is proposed to be constructed over an existing sanitary sewer service. So they just have to take that into account. You know, put a clean inspection box in the porch itself and protect the pipe during construction.
Does the African have any issues with that?
We had no issues with any of the members, Mr. Eric.
Could you just explain for me? I don't know that I completely understand the stormwater. So you're putting in a new gutter?
Yes, correct. The gutter now slopes this way, but they're going to pick it up and slope it back the other way.
Okay, and is the discharge from that into the parking lot?
It's into, to ground, to a splash block that runs towards the parking lot, yes.
Okay, and there's already sheet flow that goes into the parking lot, correct?
It would actually probably be shallow concentrated flow at that point.
Okay, and that condition is going to remain? So there were references to infrastructure in the, in the right of way? I'm not sure what that has to do with anything.
Well, they were talking about the possibility of directly piping it to the system. And it's better to let it, you know, run over land and pond here and there, soak into the ground rather than directing it into the system that could fail.
Yeah, fine, thank you. I just, I didn't understand the whole thing, but.
Yes.
When water goes into the parking lot, it went to the ice.
It's possible, but the slope of the parking lot is decent. It's not flat, so the water, as long as the water's moving, it won't freeze. It's only when the water sits that it tends to freeze. Well, yeah, I mean, winter maintenance will be required. This was any commercial parking lot they're going to plow, put salt down, sand.
It is. I'm not going to tell you otherwise. It is.
Who shovel, who shovel, someone?
I believe the township's house.
There's a township will shovel, they'll put salt, they'll put sand, they'll carry people to their cars if they need to.
You said the water is not going to flow southwest anymore. It's all going to go to the east side.
Right now, I believe that pretty much the center of the building, the east side flows to the east, the west side flows to the west. And now they're going to pick up all the way from the edge of the covered porch, which is about 80% of the western side of the building, and back pitch that towards the parking lot rather than directly towards the pizza restaurant. Correct.
Oh, the top of the shed, it's still going to go down. That's why you need that splash block there.
That, the splash block on the west side, that is connected to the existing shed and presumably that portion of the roof from the edge of the covered porch westward. Yes. That splash block, the splash block downspout picks up the roof area of the existing shed plus the roof area of the building from the west, the northwest corner of the proposed covered porch to the west, the westernly edge of the building. So that small 16, 16 foot of building space still goes to the west. It's a lot less than it is now, so.
And Ian, there was testimony about discharge flowing to neighbors' property. With this reconfiguration, is that going to end?
The amount of water that's going to flow to the alleyway between the old firehouse and the pizza restaurant is going to be much less than it was previously.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else? About Dan or, or nothing? Dan had no issues. Landscape architect, wrote memo dated July 25. Just to summarize, he had no, no issues with the proposed changes, additions, and doesn't feel that landscape improvements are required. Dan, on this lease report, July 25. Fire emergency services, no issues there. Anybody have any other? Sam, did you need to? No?
They need a bar, a waiver for the landscaping, correct?
From the bar, correct, from the bar, we're fine.
Because Birmingham or a combination of Birmingham and fence is required and they're just putting in the fence. Right, yeah.
Any other questions?
I have a question for the Art Council person.
Sure.
Curious about the, what percentage of the old firehouse do you currently occupy? And the other 50% is used by the emergency services?
It was, but I don't think it is anymore. They have most spring, which they're.
So they don't want to have any, they don't have any equipment in there? Okay, I'm just curious, because I remember they used to have their hazmat truck there.
Yeah, we build a facility behind, but that area where they moved out is currently not usable. It needs to be upgraded before they can use it. Usable area is still 50%.
Okay, so the eventual plan of the township is to add the 50, add, fix up that extra 50%. So it's all 100%.
The key word is eventual, eventually, yeah.
It has to be brought up the code.
I'm just, I'm just curious. I'm just, I'm just curious.
Sure, we could come up with something, Mr. Shorty.
I think they use the Wallace parking lot at night, but don't tell anyone.
It's public. Empty during the day, it's empty at night. Any other questions? I'll open it up to the public for comments regarding this application. If you have any comments or would like to talk, please step up the microphone, say your name and address for the record. And love to hear from you.
My name's Farrell Lovett-Mixon, and I reside at Three Berrien, so we are their southern neighbors.
Okay, I'm going to swear in, because I swear in all members of the public. I'm going to swear you in, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So it's one. Could you, again, please state your full name?
My name, Farrell Lovett-Mixon.
Did you spell all that?
Sorry, spell it. F like Frank, A-R-R-Y-L. L-O-V-E-T-T. M like mom, I-X-S like Sam, O-N. That's mouthful, sorry about that. And I reside at Three Berrien Avenue in Princeton Junction. So they're really good neighbors. I just want to say that. We never have any complaints, but I was wondering if six feet is the highest allowed for fence? And that's my question, if that's something that we address and.
You go seven, okay. Require variance as well.
So you don't need a variance?
And we're trying to match the existing fence as well.
So what are you thinking? I don't care if it's just six, we're good? Sorry, we're family. All right, that's my question, and we actually aren't resolved because we do recognize, and we're also thinking to continue the fence from that point, because we also have our behind brothers. And then just to sort of, if we can do it, do it that way. That's really my only, my only question.
So you're okay with your six foot fence?
We are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify something that she just said, because I had some trouble hearing it. But she, she did say that the Arts Council is a good neighbor.
Oh, I heard that loud and clear, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I did hear that.
Okay. I think we all heard it on the record.
I didn't, I didn't, I was guessing, but.
Okay. Any other member of the public would like to speak regarding this application?
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So it's one or affirm. Please state your full name for the record and spell your last name.
Denise Hamren, H-A-M-R-E-N. And I own the property at 23 Scott Avenue across from the parking lot of the Arts Council. And you are a good neighbor most of the time. So, and I was supportive of the Arts Council taking over the old firehouse when that happened. I've been here that long. However, I'm wondering if this expansion is encouraging more traffic to the Arts Council? Because when you do have an evening event, although we were promised that the overflow parking would go to the train station and a lovely path would be designed to walk up to the Arts Council, your guests take over Scott Avenue, sometimes on both sides of the street, which is, they're not supposed to. So that's my concern, and the late hours. So thank you for the council member that brought that up. Because there have been times when the music has been really loud and it's been late at night and hasn't gone away. That's my question and concern.
With the parking being issued, please, pardon?
I mean, they now have new sidewalks with flashing beacon from parking lot to Arts Council. I mean, when they redid the Alexander Road, we added crosswalks and flashing beacon. So it's just, I don't know how to force somebody to walk five extra feet.
Does Scott Avenue have a parking restriction sign on it?
I don't, I don't believe so. There's no. No, but those are, those are probably for people parking there and going to the train station. So like most other township, nine to 11, I assume. Oh, so then just call the police. Oh, so then just call the police and we get the revenue?
She, she stated, so one side is no parking anytime, other side has allowable after five o'clock.
We, in the history, have we ever issued parking tickets? History of West Williams?
Does she have to be sworn in? No. Okay, well.
Is the parking problem mostly at night? During the day?
It's sometimes during the day, but during the night. And it also affects the kids, we got company, there's no work for any of the cars. Can the Arts Council notify, when you have an event at night, can you notify people that you prefer people not park on Scott Avenue, please use on-drive parking lot?
Parking, notifying our guests, our, our guests.
Notify their guests.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That they should be restricted parking on Scott Avenue. It would help maybe a little bit.
We can include it in whatever promotional materials going out or something.
You send things home with the kids at the art show, please don't park on Scott Avenue.
Yeah, all the full parking, whatever.
They can use Wallace, right? At night, put up signs. In the fourth of February. We, what we do currently is, we are having a special event, we tell people that over the park, it's at the Wallace Park, and we also put up the signs in our parking lot, tell people that it overflows. And then maybe send it out with your list.
Okay. Okay, I think that'll help. Any other member of the public wish to speak on this application? Please step up. Okay, I'll close public comments. Okay, numbers.
I'll move to close the public. Second.
Please call the law.
Mr. Patel?
Yeah.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Pankov?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chevers?
Yes.
Mayor Morate?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes.
Okay, um, any deliberations or, entertaining motion to approve?
I only comment, which is concerned, which is getting, how loud, or how noisy it can get at night, so as to not affect the neighbors. So, it's, it's always saying it doesn't want to put any conditions on, and I guess you're saying that you should deal with the lease.
I think it needs to be dealt with the lease, is my opinion, I think Curtis agrees with me.
I do.
And the reason is that whenever we're dealing with commercial properties and it's blocked against residential, usually have eleven p.m. cut off with lights and noise and so on. Now, proximity is very close together, so you go to lease negotiated, and then you decide back and forth on how you want to deal with it in the upcoming lease. That's what I think, I think Curtis agrees with me, and I saw a couple of the nods too.
Yeah, well, I mean, the way it works under our former government, except the administration, the mayor will report, and they need to post lease, and it's not like we're an entity.
No, I understand, okay, so.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll cover it in the lease.
I mean, that's, to me, it's a standard thing in a lease, operating hours. Right?
Well, sometimes with other applications, we're nine to ten hours, but.
That's because, and, and, but, you know, just to caveat that, we're talking about possibly a commercial, that commercial building that could run twenty-four seven, and we don't want him running after eleven because the noise and the lights. That's a little bit different than, than this, so I, again, I recommend that it gets negotiated and thought about, and then they will present it at the time when the new lease comes up.
We will cover it in the lease.
Okay.
Anybody else, anything else? Kind of entertain a motion to approve application, TV twenty-three dash oh three?
And, and let me just go over the minus site plan approval, that MIC variance, as articulated earlier, we can go over the numbers again if you would like. The waiver from the buffer requirement in the following, I think it's only two conditions. One is that the space cannot, the new space that's being built cannot be enclosed, and the second is, um. Yeah, it's Francis's one point oh four sanitary sewer cleanout shown on the site plan under the proposed cover, covered porch is to receive an inspection box that should also be reflected in the porch concrete slab on the architectural plan, so that it's not over a burn construction.
Okay, that's all, thank you, Jerry.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, motion by Simon, second by Annis. Please call the law.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Mr. Pankov?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chevers?
Yes.
Mayor Morate?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes.
Motion, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, nice to see you.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna take a ten-minute break. Okay? Ten-minute break until we have a working session. I'm not sure.
I will. Nice to know, good seeing you.
I don't know. Thank you.
And listen, yeah. We can't convince your neighbors to, to make, it's just kind of talking about how to improve things. It's true. We are pinsy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, okay, yeah. Like, okay, no, no, I get it, I get it. Like, it's not one neck, it's another.
Yeah.
I'm balanced, just, I'm balanced.
Oh, so far so good. Next week. I'm going, I'm going to Massachusetts. The material, I like the material, I like it, and I can't, everyone. Duck spear, yeah, duck spear is, that's, yeah. Right, it is, duck spear is.
Okay.
Well, she, there you go, said that was being a close press. That was just sad, if you go to bed, just say, said, we, some bees, which I, some of the birds, you know, keep your watch.
I'm using a part of the light, my friend, no, no, we're going to, she said, one of the ones, two.
Yes, I know, I know. I love partying. Yeah. Yes.
What, what does he mean? Like, I'm something, he's, he's. This was my, this was my original.
Well, that's a good thing.
Instead of having this size, we have this size.
I don't have the conservation, so. What's that, what's that review? Oh. Are these mine?
Yeah, mine, uh, yeah, mine's right.
Oh, okay, great. Sam. Sam.
I, I'm in the wrong seat. Oh, you're right. So then, then, then that is mine, that is mine. Sam, this is Simon's. And that's, that's probably mine.
This is mine.
Is it not mine?
I have, I have mine. I put mine away.
I was sitting in the wrong seat. This is me. This is Simon's. Do you think I put it in your bag already? Yeah, yeah, you did. It'll all work out. We're not doing it for a while.
Maybe because I know it was for the agenda for the. It was for the.
So, what's the, uh? Right, you know, the philosoph was on it. Either planning or zoning. Not, I didn't know her life.
At least you admit. Oh, I know. Who knows for that to become.
Okay. Knock concession here. Okay. Next up, we're gonna have a master plan work session regarding Dutchneck planning and zoning study. Everybody has in their package a Dutchneck planning draft. And David, you wanna kind of like?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Can everybody hear me? Okay, is my microphone working?
Can the audience?
Yeah, I was about to say, if anybody can't hear me from the audience.
You can move on.
Ah, or you can yell me.
Hey, David, you move this side. It's easier.
Oh, yeah. And you, you could see the public also, David.
Whole new perspective in this room now, I never said this.
We'll have to mix up the seats once in a while, be on your toes.
No, consultants usually don't like that, they'll get very particular about where they sit. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Uh, just, you forgot who I was, my name is David Novak, I am the first associate. We are the Council of Planning Consultants, we've been so for about five or six years now outside. Uh, and I've been discussing the draft, Dutchneck planning and zoning study, which is dated July 12, 2023. Before we get started, I think it's important to note that the document discussing tonight is just a draft. So, nothing is being adopted tonight. Nothing will be formalized. This is more of a starting point, just to help us formulate ideas and get feedback for this area. And there will be a future.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you, can you just kind of give like a one or two sentence narrative on why we're doing this?
Oh, I have, I have that all laid out, yes.
You want to make sure I?
Nope, I have all that now. Um, but the eventual goal of this document is to have it adopted as an appendix of our master plan. And I promise I will get to that while we're doing this.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Discuss our master plan, so just very briefly, uh, what is a master plan? It's a comprehensive, long-term strategic development document, which is intended to drive, guide the growth of development of community. So, I use this analogy a lot, so forgive me, but think of a master plan as a roadmap. It identifies where municipality presently is and where it wishes to be in the future. It develops the parameters around which development is to occur and where it is to go. Typically, a master plan is divided into several chapters, or what we call elements. And they all deal with specific topics. Over the past several years, the planning board has been working, uh, very tirelessly to update several elements of our master plan. So, in fact, in 2020, we updated our land use plan element. In 2021, we updated our circulation plan, our utilities plan. We also updated a housing element, fair share plan in 2019. Uh, most recently, we updated our farmland preservation plan. Currently, we're working on a historic preservation plan, uh, which will be heard in a couple of weeks, as well as a conservation plan element of the master plan, that'll also be heard in a couple of weeks. And we're also working on this document. So, that's what a master plan is. What a cluster plan is not, is a development regulation. So, while a master plan document is supposed to establish the framework for how we come up with our zoning requirements or our development regulations, it's not enforceable. Um, that can only be done through ordinance by mayor and council. And typically, your zoning is supposed to match up with your master plan. Your master plan sets the framework, and then your zoning order provides the specifics. So. To address the chairman's question, why are we doing this? We're doing this because looking at the Dutchneck area has been a longstanding goal of the township since at least 2021 years ago. The 2002 master plan identified Dutchneck as well as several other hamlets as, um, a special neighborhood conservation district, or recommended it be studied as a special neighborhood conservation district. Specifically recommended the township, uh, that this area quote be surveyed in detail to identify unique land use, bulk, natural, historic, architectural, or other characteristics which may tend to preserve it, and where possible, enhancing the positive attributes of these residential clusters. It noted that this type of study can be done in conjunction with a historic district assessment, and it also noted that a potential option would be overlay zoning, uh, to be created to address special design standards in those areas. That was the 2002 master plan. Six years later, the township adopted its 2008 reexamination report. Now, put simply, what a reexamination report does is exactly what its name implies. Reexamines a master plan to see if it can be adjusted or tweaked based on changes at the national, state, county, and local level. One of the changes offered by the 2008 reexamination report once again dealt with Dutchneck community. And very simply, it noted that the quote zoning of the older core section of Dutchneck Village should be revised to reflect actual conditions. Ten years later, the township adopted the 2018 reexamination report. I think that was actually one of the first documents I worked with the township on. That essentially repeated that same recommendation by the 2008 reexamination report. Two years later, in 2020, the township adopted its land use plan element of the master plan. Again, one of those chapters of the master plan we discussed. That plan created a new land use category near the intersection of Village Road and South Mill Road. And the plan noted that that land use category was quote created in recognition of the unique and varied development pattern of the Dutchneck community. The 2020 land use plan noted that the sizes of residential lots in that area range anywhere from approximately 5,000 square feet to almost near 90,000 square feet. Uh, and it also contained a number of significant non-residential uses, including a few churches, houses of worship, few public, quasi-public areas as well, uh, as well as Dutchneck school. The 2020 land use plan referred to the recommendation of the 2008 reexamination report, which again was reiterated by the 2018 reexamination report. And it specifically recommended that the township review the existing development patterns in the community in order to determine whether any new zoning standards or zoning districts are required to be more reflective of this area's existing development pattern. And the main intent of that recommendation was two-fold. The first was to recognize and preserve the existing historic and unique development pattern of Dutchneck. And the second was to adequately address the reasonable expectation of homeowners in regard to modern home improvements. So, that's essentially the genesis of why we're doing the study. It's been a long-term planning goal of the township to study this area because there's been a recognition that the Dutchneck neighborhood, uh, is encapsulated in four different zoning districts, which essentially bisect different areas, cuts up the area almost like a jigsaw puzzle. And that zoning is not always reflective of the existing development pattern that's there. Why is that important? Well, if there's a homeowner that wants to add an addition, or they want to fix up their house, it can lead to additional costs because the zoning may not allow them to do that. Then they have to go with the board's adjustment for variance. So. Again, the genesis of this study was really based on that 2002 master plan recommendation, which carried over through a couple of reexamination reports, carried over to our 2020 land use plan, which said, hey, let's look at this area, let's figure out where the zoning matches up with the existing development pattern, where it doesn't, and where it doesn't, how can we resolve that? How can we fix that? How can we make the zoning there more reflective of the development pattern there? So, that's a very broad overview of why we're doing this. When we look at the structure of the report, and we'll go into each section, and typically what we like to do is go section by section. Very generally, the first section identifies a goal and several policies that are designed for the Dutchneck area. Section two provides a brief history of the Dutchneck area, which goes back to approximately the 1750s when we look at European settlement. Section three jumps from 1750s to today, specifically how the Dutchneck area is present and developed. Next section four discusses the zoning of the area, which includes four separate zoning districts. That's the R20 district, the R28 district, the R30 district, and the R2 district. Next, section five provides a zoning analysis. So, what it does is that it looks at the requirement of those zoning districts, and it sees what levels of conformity exists. So, within each zoning district, how many properties conform to those zoning requirements, and how many do not? And then based on that, section six offers a number of recommendations. And again, these are draft recommendations, they're really just to get the ball moving at this point, to get our, uh, creative juices floating about how we can look at this area and potentially zone it more reflective of the development pattern. So, initially, what I wanted to do is jump into the introduct, well, I guess we can begin with the introductory section. There is an executive summary in the beginning, I'd like to save that towards the end because that includes a number of recommendations. So, uh, the introduction basically lays out the foundation of why we're doing this, and divide, it discusses how the report is organized. So, it's more informational, but typically what we like to do, um, is go through those sections, see where I screwed up ethnographically or grammatically, uh, correct those issues, answer questions, and then take it section by section. And then, what we do is keep a red line edited version of this, so we can see what's changed and what has remained the same. So, beginning with section one, I'm sorry, beginning with the introduction. Did anybody notice any typos, any issues?
Fourth line down, Voorhees is B-O-R-H-E-S. It's a historic, um, New Jersey family.
B-O-R-H-E-S.
Correct.
And I should know that.
And that's consistent elsewhere in the document.
Yes, uh, I should know that the Voorhees Transportation Center is at the Glosen School, which is where I went to grad school.
Or the, the Voorhees Museum, the Rutgers University.
That as well. You know?
I don't even think you needed to say the truth. I think you could take out, um.
And Ralph married.
Yeah.
That works for me. I, I, I too, I went through that same struggle, I didn't know if it was non-uniform or un-uniform, and Mike was awful word to not yell.
Remove it. And they send it very, I like it.
Well, and one, two, three, the third paragraph, last line, um, mentions about the reasonable expectations of homeowners in regard to modern home improvements. Like, what is, what is that based on?
Uh, based on two different things. One was based on the language that was in the 2020 land use plan. The other aspect is looking at some of the ages of the homes in the area. Uh, and again, we're not encouraging those homes to be torn down, in fact, we're trying to encourage through some regulations that they remain. But with the understanding that some of those homes may not have very large bedroom sizes, some of them may not have closets within their bedrooms because of their age. Essentially, looking at what one would expect with a modern home, slightly larger bedroom sizes, maybe a mudroom, closet space, additional storage space. Looking at those modern home amenities and seeing if the zoning can be tweaked to allow for some of the older houses to potentially incorporate some of that without having to go through either boundary leave or without having to, uh, request a variance that deviates so much from the underlying zoning.
That's hard.
It is. So, that's one of the issues that we've had up in, uh, one of the other towns I worked with, there in the old metro, it's Tannafly. Tannafly was going through a big teardown phenomenon where older houses were being torn down and newer ones were being built. And one of the reasons was bedrooms and closets.
Open floor plants.
Open floor plant. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, HGTV really ruined house design for a lot of America, I feel like. So, through some of the provisions that we'll get to, we're hoping that we're going to be able to maintain a lot of those houses, specifically through some idea that we've had with floor area ratio controls. But it is a balancing act, um, and that's kind of what we're trying to accommodate.
If you change things, they could still knock it down, we're trying to preserve the old homes.
Exactly.
That's what we want, but there's no guarantee that you can change them, but that happens.
Exactly, exactly. But we can try to encourage it. So, we'll get there, but one of the things that we recommend is for pre-existing houses in certain zoning districts to allow for a slightly higher floor area ratio, but if that pass is torn down, lower floor area ratio. So, looking for mechanisms to try to encourage people to maintain those existing houses because Dutchneck does have such a unique character, it would be a shame to lose that.
Were you had any discussion with any, anyone living in the study area? So, sometimes like an open house, you want to get some feedback or survey or anything?
Yeah, I, I, it'd be great. The only two conversations I had were as when I was walking in the neighborhood. Essentially chatted with one person, uh, who was questioning why I was taking pictures of houses, so they're making sure it was not a creep.
For real estate.
And then another person was out walking their dog and, uh, child, and I just asked that what they really liked about the neighborhood. Um, so I just got input on that, but I would love the opportunity to be able to, uh, go into some houses. Legally speaking, I'd like to go into the houses legally speaking.
Okay.
Was there anything else in the introductory section that people had questions? The next section is section one, which outlines a goal, thus our four policies for the Dutchneck area. That goal and the policies are intended to guide future zoning recommendations and actions for the Dutchneck community. The goal is to recognize and preserve the existing historic and unique. The goal is to recognize and preserve the existing historic and unique development pattern of Dutchneck while also adequately addressing the reasonable expectation of homeowners in regard to modern home improvements. If that sounds familiar, it's because that goal was taken from the 2020 land use plan. We do have four policies that are associated with that. And a policy is just something that further pontificates upon that goal. Policy one is to identify and protect historic resources through the use of creative land and development techniques, i.e. flexible implementation of setbacks and buffers and other methods as may be found effective and practical. Policy two is to continue to use the local open space tax to preserve historic resources. In addition, pursue other state and county funding mechanisms, methods of acquisition and/or preservation as available and practical, i.e. conservation easements and private donations.
Meaning for purchase of--
Essentially.
--open space or purchase of individual units?
Purchase of open space and purchase of potentially historic resources as well.
There's really not any open space that would meet the standards of a county, I don't think.
I would tend to agree with that, so it should really be focused more on historic resources. I agree.
Presidents.
And that was, well, let me get to that as well. Policy three, maintain design and setting standards to protect the township's historic and rural character throughout West Windsor and particularly in the township's original hamlet and along with those roadways where natural vegetation, farmland, or open space remain. These historic features should be preserved wherever possible as they contribute to the pastoral open character of much of the township and represents the community's heritage. And policy four is to preserve and protect the residential character of Dutchneck and restrict incompatible land uses from the established neighborhood. The first three policies are largely based on our existing master plan, but I agree, we should curtail policy two and really focus on historic resources. The fourth policy was one that I offered for the study, walking through Dutchneck and we'll discuss it more in detail, but walking through Dutchneck, you really get more of a residential feel in that area. There are some large non-residential buildings there, but walking up and down the street, it really does feel residential. So one of the policies, I think, which may be worthwhile for this board to consider is making sure that we protect that residential character.
Yeah, I don't think there's any, I think, commercial or anything.
Nothing.
So it's just going to remain the way it is with the houses of worship--
Yep.
--and schools and school board office and--
Exactly.
The school board office is not one that conforms with the residential feel of the community. I've mentioned that many times before.
Yes, yeah. You're talking about the waterfalls in Dutchneck.
The transportation office--
Yes.
--where the school buses are in there all day long.
And we do have a recommendation for that site based on some of the complaints I've heard and understandable complaints as well.
I understand some Airbnb on that, in that area now.
I am not familiar with any Airbnb. I don't know if--
There's an Airbnb.
Is there?
Right?
Yep.
Love it. Oh. People know the neighborhood. I love it.
We know it.
I know, I love it. I love it.
Keep, keep in mind, there's nothing that prevents folks from renting a house out for a month, two months, or a year, or more than that. It's under 30 days is where there's a problem.
That's what I was going to ask you.
They're all the time. If they're changing them out every day or every weekend, then that's illegal. And I did talk to the owner who bought the property from your brother-in-law and advised them because originally when they bought it, they were renting it out over the weekends. So if they're, okay, if they're doing it on a weekly basis, if they're doing it, give my office a call, I'll give the owner a call and let her know that. She's been put on notice on that.
And you also can do that a year or 30 days.
You can't rent your house out for less than 30 days a year. So if you rent it on the weekends, like a bed and breakfast, or two weeks or three weeks or whatever, it has to be monthly or yearly. So if someone is going back to overseas for a year because they got transferred, they can rent their house out for a year.
But is that something that should be looked at? And maybe say--
Kay is going to give me a call tomorrow and let me know so I can give the owner a call, get the specifics from her in the morning, and then we'll go from there. There's no need to waste the board's time tonight on enforcement issues.
But Sam, is that by virtue of municipal ordinance?
It's, it's an interpretation of the municipal ordinance that allows that. I can't, there's nothing I can cite that stops somebody from renting their house out for a year. If it's less than a month, I consider it a hotel or something like that, and that's specifically prohibited in residential districts.
But should we look at that to say it should be--
It would be town-wide. It wouldn't be specific to Dutchneck. That's something outside of the study area we're talking about here.
Like a short-term rental.
And David, I had a question about policy number one.
Yes.
Reference flexible implementation. What puts your thought on that? I'm not sure what that's about.
What's my thought on flexible implementation per se? Okay. So, you know, as we go into the core of Dutchneck, lot sizes typically get smaller. That's where your older dwellings are for the most part. In those areas, it might be difficult to meet front, side, rear setback requirements, buffer requirements, floor area ratio requirements. So there may be opportunities to think about how we look at, how we regulate some of those setback requirements. For example, and this is something that I was going to discuss with the board, I didn't include it in this report yet, one of the towns that I worked with implemented this regulation in their, one of the residential districts wherein you have a front yard setback of 40 feet, but you also have the opportunity to average out the existing front yard setbacks of each dwelling adjacent to you.
Yeah.
That way, if you're required to have a front yard setback of 40 feet, but your neighbor has a setback of 10 feet, your other neighbor has a setback of 20 feet, you're allowed to average that out to 15 feet.
Yeah.
So--
I think Lawrence does that too.
Yes, yeah. So when we go to that flexible zoning requirements, that's one of the things that we might be looking at.
And policy number three, it seemed to me it's very generic and had very little to do with Dutchneck.
I would agree with you. I think we could probably lose policy three.
Yeah, just--
I don't know if anybody feels strongly one way or the other. Looking at it, what I was trying to do is pick out some of the goals and policies in our 2020 land use plan that discussed historic resources, but this is very general and I feel like it does talk more about the pastoral setting of the township. Well, Dutchneck was surrounded by pastoral areas. A lot of those have now, well, have been developed. So we can either wordsmith policy three to make it more specific to the Dutchneck area.
I was going to say that.
Yeah, yeah. So we can take a look at that and wordsmith it and make it a little bit more specific to the area.
David, I don't know how the members of the board feel. I don't think it's necessary for you to read as you go through as opposed to just listening comments or if you have any comments.
And policy four, what would be, it says restrict incompatible land uses from the established neighborhood. So what are you thinking?
I would say, you know, some larger, I would say commercial developments to an extent. So ensuring that whatever zoning recommendations we make are not going to be, you know, recommending a supermarket right next to, you know, an established residential area.
Yeah, I'm trying to think where this would even go.
And one of the, I hate to say it, maybe one of the houses of worship, if the fire department was ever leaving.
Maybe add examples of what you mean by incompatible land uses.
Yes.
I mean, supermarket, i.e. warehouse, i.e. whatever, that way make it more specific of what you want, what you don't want to spare.
Or right now, the residential zones as a conditional use, we allow daycare. So maybe you don't want to have a daycare in the Dutchneck area or something like that.
Yeah.
What about something like a picture, I don't know, like if it was a factory department, small lawyer's office or a small professional offices?
I have no problem banning lawyers any from the township.
Jerry, we don't even want to be driving through.
Smaller fashion services offices, because you could see that other parts of West Windsor around St. Joe, where the homes would be very, you know, I don't know. Like a doctor's office or a dentist's office. But those are the parts that they tried to push, which-- counter to the back of the blocks. A master plan, a master plan row to divert traffic down to Dutchneck. If you would have wanted some of that, which you pay.
So we do establish currently home occupations as a conditional use throughout the township.
Permitted accessory.
Permitted accessory use? Oh, shall be permitted, I like the terminology. So let me rephrase that. We establish home occupations as a permitted use in all residential districts currently. One of the caveats is that a home occupation may be located on a similarly dwelling that needs to be, oh, sorry.
Three quarters of an acre.
It's three quarters of an acre, but you're allowed to have one on a lot smaller than three quarters of an acre if no employees are hired there. Therefore, the occupant does not generate more than one passenger automobile at one time. So right now, we do have standards that say if you're above three quarters of an acre, you're allowed to have a home occupation as an accessory use provided you meet a bunch of other regulations in the area. If you're less than three quarters of an acre, which a lot of the properties in Dutchneck are going to be less than three quarters of an acre, you're not allowed to have anybody else occupied on the site and you can only have one passenger vehicle at a time. So we weren't making any recommendations in this to expand that further for Dutchneck. So we weren't making any recommendations to allow for easier regulations for home occupations in the area.
And somebody else is behind, understand?
And that's really what we look at for a home occupation. You're right, there's, you know, we actually had a discussion with the zoning board recently. Tomorrow, I'll be working remotely from my apartment, but a home occupation is more like exactly what you were saying, where you have people coming to the property, it's where your office is located, it's where your visitors are coming, that's really your home occupation. So, yeah, and we're not making any recommendation in this report to increase that capacity for Dutchneck.
I think Phyllis just wants to eliminate professional service establishments, like doctors' offices, lawyer--
Except lawyers.
Except lawyers. Except lawyers, Jerry, if you want to move in. And what he talks about, if you add a facility on a supermarket, like most, I would rather than include one, allow smaller vehicles. Right.
Okay, so you could, David, if you could just add some like examples of your footnote to that.
Yes, absolutely.
And maybe you want to be selective about it, going back to the lawyer thing. I mean, you know, people don't need to have a lawyer down the block, but it could be very useful having a doctor down the block. So we might want to focus a little bit on what kind of professional services should be readily accessible.
Cars, no urgent care facilities.
Yeah.
I guess I see an accountant or something, but-- a doctor is going to--
Well, that's true. That is true.
They're going to have appointments every 15 minutes. There's going to be trucks coming in.
And it's funny, you see a lot of dentists, well, you used to have a lot of dentists moving into home, older homes, and I feel like the trend has been away from that because of how large the machinery gets. But right now, we find a home occupation as a professional office, individual instruction and provision of services conducted in a dwelling unit. So I don't know if you consider it--
We hardly ever get home occupation permit applications coming in anymore because one of the requirements is that the home occupation, the person has to live there. So if it's a dentist, he's got to live in the house, he can't use it more than 25% used before or for the home occupation use. So there's a lot of limitations and everything on that. So we just don't, David's right, we just don't see that coming in anymore.
Was there any other questions? Is there comments regarding the goal of the houses?
Now, if there's goal policies, that does nowhere in here does that include the accessory dwelling unit idea?
No, it does not. And I know, that's just to get the ball rolling. I know there's going to be feedback on that.
It's to make sure you read the document, Linda. You have read the document.
Are we entertaining questions about that now?
No.
Oh, we're going through the document page by page.
We get there.
David, on the next section, I just have a brief comment. Halfway down, you refer to Allentown, New Jersey, to Princeton, New Jersey. I think, I don't think you have to put in the language, New Jersey. I mean, the reason Allentown in Pennsylvania is I think Allentown, New Jersey, but I need to just access for a beach.
Yeah, and so it was just eliminate the superfluous reference to New Jersey.
Yeah.
Okay, I like that.
Then the, I have one other thing on this page. It's, it's, yes, it's the third paragraph.
Yeah.
Fifth line down to the end, the I in "in" should be capitalized.
Yes.
Good catch, Jerry.
Well, there's a few typos in that paragraph. Like the third line should say constructed by the late 18th, right?
Yes.
18th century. Then two lines, again, it says as early as the mid-18th century.
Yes.
And you got Jerry's, you know, should be capitalized in that, okay?
You nailed 19th, by the way.
Yeah, you got 19th, right.
You got 19th, right. You just missed on 18th.
Now, that second paragraph where you mentioned about this Jacob Bergen Inn, it says, say, one, two, three, four, five. The fifth line on the second paragraph is this "inn." It's a small "i-n-n." Should that be capitalized? Was officially called the Jacob Bergen Inn or Bergen Inn?
I get that as lowercase because it was just referring to the "in" as a, you know, like a lowercase noun. If I was assigning the name to it, then I would have capitalized it.
Right.
A lot of this, by the way, might look familiar because a lot of it is for Mark 's preservation plan.
I have, I have one thing on page seven, but there are a number of things like this. When you say at the end, the last paragraph, today, Dutchneck remains a significantly old hamlet. I don't know if that significantly adds anything.
We can, we can remove significantly from that. Yeah.
I don't think it adds something.
Yeah. So just remove "and," we'll add a "an." What is a blacksmithy?
Blacksmithy.
Blacksmithy, that was an old-time language, but essentially a blacksmith. Yeah.
So that's a blacksmith with a Y?
Yes, that was taken from the, that's actually taken from the Everett and Stewart Atlas of Mercer County, so.
My ex-brother-in-law is a blacksmith.
Really?
He wasn't a smithy, he was just a blacksmith.
If they dropped the Y sometime after 1875. Any other comments to the, to the--
Page eight, I have something.
Yes. These are some of the pictures where I was asked why I was taking pictures.
Yeah, second paragraph says the Dutchneck hamlet approximately begins near the former intersection with country, the former intersection--
So, yes.
I live in Country Squire Lane, that's the beginning of the Hunter's, apostrophe S, Hunter's Run development.
Yes.
Okay, I live on the other side of it, but this was the beginning. So the first house on the right was the model. Is that, which one is not in the Dutchneck?
We included two properties in Hunter's Run within this study, and the reason being is, and I don't think we'll have to talk, but--
Very odd.
If you were not to include those two properties, some of the zoning recommendations you make, you would essentially have those two lots all within their own zoning district. So the reason we included those two lots, and again, they're not technically part of Dutchneck, do you understand?
But they're technically, and they are, and I pulled out my old stuff 28 years ago, bought the house, right? Here's Hunter's Run. Here is Country Squire Lane, and here are these two units. This is part of Hunter's Run, it should be--
See, that was the model home.
Those are the two.
Yeah, this is the model and right across the street. It's part of this development. They don't make front to each other, they don't run south of the road, they burn and everything, so.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I agree with you.
I thought it was a mistake. I thought it was a mistake there. Why, why weren't they put in the R28, which is Hunter's Run?
I bet I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know. Maybe it's a mistake.
They weren't putting in that because the lots are oversized. So if it was in the R28, they could subdivide those two lots. If they still wanted to do it because they're over an acre each. That's, that's why it wasn't in the 28.
Yeah, but see all this.
A lot of other large lots here. I mean, I just felt like that should just stick with.
Well, I think the recommendation, when you get to it, it's going to be put back in the R28. I think we're getting to it.
Okay, so I think in the report, I put it in the R30 districts, which. You're right, the R20 is connected to Hunter's Run. There is an R30 that goes further up the road. But when we get to that section, we can certainly make the recommendation to do R20 instead. The only reason, yeah, the only reason I put it in the R30 as a recommendation was because of that subdivision. So. Those lots could potentially be subdivided, not the end of the world, obviously. And you're right, the R20 would be more in tune with the rest of the Hunter's Run neighborhood.
I want to keep the neighborhood.
Uniformly.
We don't call it developmental. It was part of the development.
Yes.
So, yeah.
No, yeah.
He's saying these can be subdivided if they're in the R28.
The R30, they couldn't be either, but.
There's other very large lots. Yeah, but they might not make the setback departments.
So my question on this issue, you can tell me if we're going to talk about it at existing zoning. But I'll put the question out there since it's coming up quite frequently right now. What are the, the, the differences between R20 and R28?
We will get there with the zoning, but.
Okay, I mean, we will answer that. It's coming up a lot right now.
Yeah, it's essentially, those zoning districts were designed. To reflect the development patterns of the neighborhoods that were in there. So while the lot sizes are the same, R20 and R28.
A lot of the bulk regs are the same.
So, yeah, but some of them, some of them do differ. And that's what's supposed to reflect those subdivisions.
Okay.
Now, it's page 21, it has that, well, if you want a description.
No, I don't want the description. I just want to know differences, differences is my concern.
Back to section three, page eight, because we will get to those recommendations.
We'll get there. You'll get to my question, but I just wanted to bring it up since we're talking.
Are those pictures on page eight when you were talking to those dog owners on South Mill Road?
That was a little before, that's when I was confronted by.
Before he was chased?
Yes. When I was chased away.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to.
David, just two things on, on section three, page eight, second paragraph. Again, similar to what I indicated a minute ago, where you say approximately in the first sentence and initially in the second sentence. I don't think they add anything to those sentences.
You don't think what? I'm sorry.
I don't think they add anything to those sentences, the approximately in the first sentence and the initially in the second sentence.
Hamlet begins, not approximately.
Yeah.
And what was the?
Initially, in the next sentence.
It's really the next house, which is the picture on the top right. That was Heidens. It is Heidens House.
Yeah, once you hit that house and you're really.
Then you're in.
Then you're in, yes.
Yeah, right. So Hunter's Run is not in that planning area, correct?
Hunter's Run is not in Dutchneck. The reason we included those two lots is because they were kind of the, they would have been orphaned as a zoning district. So that's why we're including them in the study.
Yes, I guess it's just, like Jerry was saying, the Dutchneck hamlet approximately begins. Where does it begin with, with that house?
I would say, in my opinion, it begins with that house, but there's really no delineation. So you know you're in Dutchneck where you're in center because they have the church there and they have a little monastery.
But it's an old house.
It isn't old.
They have a garage. They put in another apartment, both a garage and they have a, like a bungalow.
Yes, yes.
Which.
Yeah, I would say that house is. More of a demarcation of where Dutchneck begins. So we can bring that up. I just wanted to give that intersection because I thought that was a little bit more noticeable than just calling out that house. But we can do either way.
I think it begins with that house, the older house. Begins with numbered, whatever.
Yeah, so we will swap out. Near the former's intersection of Country Squire Lane and put in.
Begins at something.
At the house depicted in, is it image three?
Just put the address in, why not?
Yeah. Dave, on the second line in page eight, I don't think you need that scant either. You could just say just folding within.
Very fancy words you have.
Why I threw it in?
Yeah.
But we can say fully within. Or is it within?
Yeah, we like it, we like it simple.
Yes, exactly. That's why I don't use the word penalty anymore. Anything on page nine or page ten?
Just on page nine, that image number seven.
Yeah.
Just seemed a little strange. It didn't seem like it was historic. It looked like it was something you were, you took as you were trying to run away from the German Shepherd.
Is that a general store?
That is the general store.
Oh, that's okay.
Maybe could you mention that?
Yeah, I think that's worth it. That's worth mentioning, yeah.
Is it a general store or the post office?
It was both, yeah.
It was a dance studio at one point.
We can identify that. And I too have a zoning board hearing tomorrow, so I may try to take another picture of the area. So if you see me wandering around Dutchneck, it's, it's because of him.
A left the German Shepherd owner down.
It's a very nice dog on that.
Can I just add some color to it there? Just come down the road and come in for a cup of tea?
I thought they moved Massachusetts.
Anything on page nine?
Well, I have one other thing. In the text, under the top two images. The language in the second, second sentence, among those two branches of the hamlet. I, I think it's, I think it's awkward and I don't think you need it. And even when it be among, it would be.
We'll eliminate that. So that sentence will just begin with Dutchneck, their character.
Yeah, right.
Is more apparent along the road east.
You could say along Village Road East with several historic districts instead of ending the sentence.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You're talking about more apparent along Village Road East with several historic dwellings instead of starting a new sentence. Just a thought.
Yes, yes, with several historic districts. Maybe in 1765 and 1850 or situated. Yeah, we can back those two sentences in the one.
David, on page ten, right at the top, where you say, while the hamlet contains some significantly. Large non-residential properties, rather than significantly, which has been ambiguous. Is there other language you can use which better describes the point you're getting at?
We can just take out some significantly and say, while the hamlet contains several large non-residential properties.
Yeah, that's great.
That's fine.
Yeah. I think that's, that's all I have on the, for amendments.
That one mentions about the including one property utilized as a pool for adjoining dwelling. Is that? Non-conforming use or?
No, we treated it, it's just a residential lot. They're both. Both lots, one which is developed by a single-family dwelling and the other one is developed by a pool, are owned by the same family. Yes, and the lots were never. It was, yes. And the lots were never joined back again, so. I just treated it as a regular residential lot. I thought it would get a little bit confusing if I. If it was a, some sort of other non-conforming use, I wouldn't have identified it as such, but because it was a pool for an accessory structure on an adjoining property. I just kept it a little more simple and treated it as a residential lot.
Oh, that's right.
On fourth line, on page ten. When you say this, the 61 are residential in nature. Why you need, you want to say in nature, just residential only?
We could say residential. Of the 71 properties in less than 61 are residential.
Yes, in nature should be.
Yeah, you can give it in nature.
You're just taking out in nature.
In nature, yes.
If each lot is undersized in the zoning district and it's owned by the same owner, it's considered married under our section of the code. So even though it's two tax lots, they'd have to come in for the planning board for a minor subdivision or go to the zoning board, depending on whether we create an FAR variance for the existing home. So no, they couldn't just do it and knock the pool down and come in with a building permit. They'd have to get a subdivision. In 1987. That, that's correct. It wouldn't meet the area requirements. It would meet the FAR probably or the MIC or the setbacks. So the zoning board would have jurisdiction for the minor subdivision. Along with the D variances.
Anything on page 11? Or page 12?
Yeah, on page 12 in the box, it starts, it's B O T, resin B O T H at the very beginning.
Dave?
Yes.
Figure four doesn't work for me at all. What are you trying to convey with figure four, the box plot of lot sizes? I understand, I'm difficulty trying to, what the heck are you trying to convey?
So the box plot is one of my favorite graphs. So anything you say about the box plot, I'll take a little personally.
Well, take it personally.
So what the box plot does is that, anyway, it's not a sample, so if everybody's confused by it, we can afford to move it. But what the box plot does. Is that it identifies in graphical form the distribution of lot sizes in another way. So you see in the bottom, there's a line there. That's what we call the lower, the, the minimum value. After that, you have a box with a line running through it. That's your 25%, 50% and 75% quartiles. So that identifies, you know, a quarter of where lot sizes are, 50%, which is your median value, 75%. And then it identifies in the top of the box plot, your upper quartile. Within that, it'll also identify lot sizes that are really abnormal based on those averages, right? So you have three lot sizes in the area. Those dots above the box plot that stand out as being much larger than everything else. And then that X that you have in the middle of the box plot is the mean value, your average value. And what this shows.
Sorry, I gotta shut down on this.
Okay, we're sure, we're getting rid of the box plots?
I think you gotta get rid of it.
Thank you.
I'm a math and finance major. I have no idea what it's meaning.
No, seriously, a lot, figure, figure three, the lot size is a more informative figure than the box plot. And Dave, I have to be honest with you, the, the two dots between 7, 70,000 and 80,000 reads to me like a number eight and not just two individual dots.
Yes.
So that does not help in communicating what you want.
Consider them out.
So, yeah, I agree. Well, let's get rid of it.
If we can't understand it, I don't think the general public.
That's my point, Sue. Yeah, that's my point.
Now, if you can come up with a different graph that, that depicts the same information.
We'll just probably take that bar chart and make it bigger on the page.
Okay, or just center it on the page. That's fine.
Yeah. Okay.
We can make a table out of this box plot.
No, just get rid of it.
25 to 57.
I thought it was a television with an X on this, a new Twitter logo on the screen.
I, I feel like I just got broken up with, but I'll, I'll take. Figure seven more. Yep.
That's, that's out too.
Figure seven.
I have difficulty understanding figure five and all those little dots.
So figure five and figure eight are very similar.
Yeah, I know.
What they do is that they plot out the year a house is constructed versus what its lot size is. So those, that little dot line that you see in the middle there is a regression line. So it shows that generally as houses get newer in age, the lot sizes that they're on get larger.
Is there another way to show this?
Just, that can take a while. I'll play around with it.
But the first whole question is, do we really need this one?
Well, that's it. Do we really need it?
Uh, do you need it? No, it's just another big one.
Can you say, okay, in 1752, houses were built or in, I mean, you've got pretty much that in the context.
In the front of the document. So we can eliminate figure five as well and. And so we get what four or five.
I can understand diagrams, but.
What about, what about figure eight? Oh, and seven and eight.
And that'll shorten the document up as well.
Now, now we're under force.
Really streamlining here.
Talking about streamlining. On page, on page 17, David.
Page 17.
Right at the beginning. I would take out in fact, in the first line. Take out in fact, in the first line.
In fact.
In the first line on page 17, take out in fact.
In fact.
In the first line, are residential.
Yeah.
Can the audience please like keep their conversations among themselves limited as, you know, we, we need to try to like hear our professional. Thank you.
So page 17, we will eliminate the words in fact in the first line. Anything else on page 17?
Yeah, I have something under ID 42. That last sentence, these bodies were later relocated Heights, Tennessee, the Hill Cemetery. I would change these bodies to the remains.
Sure.
Where is that?
That's the last sentence under ID 42.
No, the list.
What are you putting instead?
The remains.
The remains.
Remains, yep, I like it.
And then in that last paragraph, David, I wasn't exactly sure what was going on. Are all these classrooms that were being built during the time period we're talking about? Were they all new or? Or you used new at some point and some other points you didn't? I wasn't sure whether it had significance.
Uh, additions, so we can take out any, uh, reference of a word new, make it a little more clear and uniform. And again, to shorten the wrap up.
Okay.
There's trailers behind the Dutchneck church, right? Uh, behind the Dutchneck school. They're gone.
Behind that next school?
Behind the next school, we're actually. I don't know what year that would be. Not too long ago. Yes, the construction of six new classrooms in two thousand and seven.
Page nineteen?
Yeah, I have just a couple of things. Under public and semi-public facilities, rather than these include the following, I would change it to these are the following, because that's all of them. And then under ID thirty-two, I think it'll read a little better, said situated closest to you from Dutchneck Presbyterian Church. This brick firehouse was constructed in nineteen fifty-two. Just moved in nineteen fifty-two up.
Yes, I would agree.
Okay.
Right.
And Sam's maybe will be getting a better picture of the old town hall, so we're gonna be swapping that out as well. Oh, Veterans Park?
The little Veterans Park on the corner, that's right.
Oh, yeah, that's right above the pictures. I think it's sixty-six or fifty-eight, that that kind of part.
Hey, um, Jerry, Jerry brought up, um, picture, image sixteen.
Yes.
Eighteen ninety? Because nobody dressed like that in nineteen ninety.
Oh, yes, yes.
I I was wondering if that was another one of those pictures.
Well, yeah, we're gonna be swapping that picture out too. Yeah, Sam's still very much clearer picture from, I think, nineteen.
Yeah, anybody recognize those goods? Anybody recognizes those?
The firehouse, which is West Windsor, it gives it official title.
It's what the June volunteer firehouse?
Yeah.
The full name, yeah. Yep. Good one, look at it.
Right, what's the, yeah, West Windsor Volunteer Fire Company.
House.
Number one.
Number one.
And although there's only one West Windsor, the other one is in conjunction, but it's still titled, West Windsor Volunteer Fire Company, number one, is the title of the company. You wanna say it's the firehouse?
It's just a proper title.
So, uh, we're talking about under inch fifteen, correct?
Yeah, so, yeah, image fifteen, West Windsor Volunteer Fire Company, number N O period one.
Well, it's the volunteer firehouse. It's showing a picture of that, but in ID number twenty-two, you identify it as volunteer fire company number one.
Yes.
And David, on page twenty, I I think that first sentence, under existing zoning overview, would read better if it read, as previously noted, properties within Dutchneck are presently located in four zoning districts, colon.
Yes, we could get rid of, as previously noted, to start with.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I would agree. We can get rid of the phrase, as previously noted, and just jump into properties.
Yeah, but I I would take out one of four, so I thought that was a little confusing. So are presently located in four zoning districts.
Okay.
The R R dash twenty-eight district, so it's Hunter's Run, so it's H U N T E R apostrophe S and with the word run, capital R U N.
Okay.
Technically, it was called Hunter's Run at West Windsor, Hunter's Run is what everybody calls it.
How was that, uh, is that one of the original?
It's just the original. You can have my entire folder. It it's a development. I mean, it's like a neighbor, but it's, but it's really technically, it's a development.
David, can you now entertain my question?
Yes, I.
The reason I ask is I looked at the the table one and table two of permitted and conditional uses. They're the same. Yet, in table three, the bulk standards, the only difference I saw was for front yard setback. And I thought, there's gotta be more to this. That's, that, really, that's it?
That's it. So when those neighborhoods in the R twenty-eight were developed, uh, they typically had front yard setbacks of thirty feet as opposed to the other neighborhoods in the R twenty, so the zoning regulations craft would reflect that.
So they they're entirely the same except for front yard setback, that bulk standard.
It makes more sense. So what we're looking at is a little bit of a vacuum, but once you look at the R twenty, R twenty A, R twenty B, I think it goes to R twenty B. Forget how many R twenties we had. R twenty C, then you see the fluctuations with those bulk standards a little bit more, but you're right, the R twenty, R twenty A are very much so.
Okay, thanks.
Was there anything else on page twenty regarding the general overview of where these districts are located? Our page twenty-one discusses the permitted uses.
I'm sorry, were you still on page twenty?
We can go back to page one, yes.
Under R twenty, did it read South Mill Road instead of just Mill Road? Sentence two, in the R two district.
The smallest district possible located in South Old Grant Road.
First sentence, R two is primarily located in smaller pockets along Village Road, West Henley Road, Mercerville, Edinburgh Road, South Mill Road? Or just using Mill Road?
Second line.
Second line, I'm sorry, second line or the R two?
R two, R two.
It should be against that, no? Okay.
And is it Mercerville, Edinburgh Road, or is it just Edinburgh Road now?
Yeah, I've never heard it called it. I've never heard Mercerville dash. I've never used that.
Edson or New Edinburgh is the only two I've ever.
Oh, it's New Edinburgh, and then if it goes straight, it goes into Edinburgh. Right. And add south on the next one, south.
Yes. I'm sorry? Oh, uh, because, so with the same period, right? It could be done differently. What I wanted to do is outline each, uh, list of permitted uses under the header of the name of the zoning district. So R twenty, everything underneath that is what's permitted in the R twenty, R twenty-eight shows the same thing, R thirty, R two districts.
So R thirty and R two are the last two things that are different, that's all.
Yeah.
Essentially, yes, yeah, the R thirty permits private, sending public or public golf clubs and country clubs. And then the R two district permits veterinary clinics and just have a generic first two thousand.
At the bottom of of page twenty, at the bottom of R two, uh, again, with the West Windsor Volunteer Fire Company number one.
Number one.
Okay.
Uh, anything else on twenty-one or page twenty-two?
Yeah, twenty-two, on the second paragraph, last one, that should be as conditionally permitted uses rather than end, right?
Yes. That end should be as. There's nothing else, page twenty-four. Page twenty-four, which begins the zoning analysis.
David, if this is the first use of FAR, I would spell it out.
Yes.
For the reader.
And that's gonna be on the.
Page twenty-five. Twenty-three.
What's twenty-three?
Second paragraph. In bulk requirements.
Oh, we saw that, let's see, great.
You're talking about in the, in the written?
Oh, in the written part, I see that, yes.
Second paragraph. It's just, you know, if it's the first use, it's thought of.
So on page twenty-four?
Yeah, I have the third paragraph, the R twenty district, last sentence. This is relatively unsurprising. I would just take out the relative. I don't think you need it.
So this is unsurprised?
Yeah, and then after that, um, you use otherwise in some paragraphs, you don't in others. I would take out the otherwise. I don't think it's actually correct. We have that in the first of the bullets, a minimum lot size, minimum lot width.
So this they got the otherwise and minimum lot size.
Yeah, right. And then the last three bullets before the chart.
We'll leave that a universal change in the session.
Yeah, good, great, because that continues on, uh, page twenty-six also.
Yeah, and I think I'll probably repeat throughout that section, so.
Yeah.
Anything else on page twenty-five or page twenty-six, and discusses all the non-conformities? Page one-seven?
Yeah, under twenty-eight, um, that first paragraph, under the R two district, I, second sentence, I would change greater degrees of non-conformity to non-conformities found in blah, blah, blah. The other page twenty-eight? That first bullet, front yard setback, three lines from the bottom, you have setback. That's two words. Three lines from the bottom of the first paragraph, that bullet setback is, oh, I'm sorry, a second line from the bottom.
Second line from the bottom, setback.
Sub setback, nearly hundred.
Should be two words.
Yeah, because it's a.
Yes.
Verb there. And then, in the next paragraph, thus needed the Pres- Dutchneck Presbyterian Church, you know, the Dutchneck Presbyterian, you want to put C E B, is that?
Yes, C E B.
Okay.
Anything else on page twenty-nine?
Yeah, that last paragraph, I would take out the, in general, the beginning, we should say generally right after that.
We mentioned educational facilities there, and it says Dutchneck School. I add, like, Dutchneck School, comma, AK three elementary public school, comma. Currently, thank you.
I would like to add that in section three, we'll talk about the education facilities. So it currently caters to, what was that, what grades?
Currently, houses, K, K three, because then you go down the road to Village School, that's four, five.
Got it.
And six, eight, five, twelve.
But that could change.
Is that, which is why we'll say current.
I don't think that's gonna, what is that gonna change?
No, I mean, as of today.
Yeah.
As of today.
Currently.
And that was, I'm sorry, K, K through three, sorry. It will add that description in the, in the, if it's, yeah.
On page thirty, that firehouse again.
Yep. Any reference to that should probably be, right.
They're saying currently, from the date, stated in twenty twenty-three, because it could change before we change.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Good point. She's saying, change to in twenty twenty-three.
But, um, on page thirty, under Dutchneck Veterans Park, I I would just get rid of which is, I'd just say Dutchneck Veterans Park comprised of three separate lots is located.
If you have to get rid of that is located entirely, there are changes.
Yeah, it'll have to read Dutchneck Veterans Park is comprised of three separate lots and is located entirely by twenty district, which. Moving on to section six, which I think is the meat potatoes of this. So what I'll do is, we'll skip over the summary on page thirty-one, we'll just take it section by section. Right, so the first recommendation we discussed is a little bit are those two properties adjacent to this fire lane. Those two properties are presently located in the R two districts, while the rest of the neighborhood there is located in the R twenty. We had originally recommended proposing, uh, rezoning those two properties to the R thirty-eight district. Um, as you can see on the map on page thirty-two, the R thirty-eight district does pick up the north, but to witness point, the rest of Hunter's neighborhood, Hunter's Run neighborhood is located in the R twenty.
Should we use neighborhood or development?
Is it development?
Yeah, that's how we always say about it.
Okay. Hunter's Run, development.
Yeah, and so there's a few other places now.
Okay, yeah, I'll make, I'll make that change universal.
Yeah, and it's Hunter's is apostrophe S.
Yes. So the recommendation that we can have is to rezone these sites to the R thirty districts. Uh, we could rezone them to the R twenty A district, which is what the rest of Hunter's Run development is located in. Um, they could potentially be self-divided. I don't think that's necessarily the end of the world, but.
I mean, the houses are, they're big, it's the.
Oh, they're big houses, yes.
The street is the model.
So you think there's no really risk to put the mini R twenty?
If you put them in R twenty A, they could be.
R twenty A, I'm sorry, R twenty A, yes.
They could be self-divided, that's an R twenty A, but what if that has an R thirty yet?
Could be in the R thirty.
They could not be.
But it's a different zoning district than what the rest of development is in.
In the R twenty A. That makes sense to me. We will make that. Okay, moving on to page thirty-three, the R two B district. This is a proposed zoning district. Uh, the reason we did not call it the R two A district is because our land use plan recommends another R two A district somewhere else, so be consistent, make sure that we're not overlapping with things. Make sure that we're not overlapping with things offered to do in the R2B district. This district would encapsulate a number of residential properties presently located along South Mill Road. These are long, deep lots that are older, they're presently located in the R2 districts. And are largely not conforming to requirements for lot width, front yard setback, and side yard setback. In addition, we did talk about lot 21.07, lot 73, that's 131 South Mill Road. That's the one that has that accessory apartment in the back, that, yeah.
You know, she had the garage, and then upstairs they. Turned into an apartment.
Yes.
An accessory, I think called like a bungalow type apartment, so there's two.
Oh, there's two then, yes. So what a recommendation is to create a new R2B district. Usually or largely utilize the same bulk standards as the R2 district. With the exception of reduced front yard setback, really looking at 30 feet maybe as opposed to 50 feet. And reduce side yard setback, reducing it to approximately 15 feet as opposed to 30 feet. And again, that would match up better with the developed pattern there. One of the other recommendations that we make, and this one I know is going to be a conversation starter, but got to get the conversation rolling somewhere. Is to utilize this district as a test run for accessory dwelling units. There's two reasons that we came up. A test run.
Test run.
Test run. So a couple of reasons why. One, we already have a property there with a bungalow and accessory apartment in the back. But secondly, we do have these longer, kind of very deep lots, so. The zoning board of adjustment has gotten a number of, at least one application recently for an accessory apartment. Seems like there's usually a little bit of interest in it. We thought that this would be a good opportunity to allow persons design flexibility in these areas. Specifically because of the size of these lots and the depth of these lots. We just thought that they might be appropriate to look at accessory dwelling units as a permitted use there. Little bit of a bold idea, but.
A lot of a bold idea, a lot of a bold idea.
Very much a bold idea, yes.
I don't know if you want to start during that, and if you do it in this district, other districts.
It doesn't have to be all over the town.
You just start at one place, believe me, because everyone else is going to be like, well, why not my development?
Well, then we have the right to refuse it.
We don't miss.
But, but I wasn't really thinking of having that all over the place.
Is there already one in there?
There is one there. That would be 131 South Mill Road, so that's the, that has the bungalow and the apartment, yeah.
That's very old, I mean, that goes, that must go back.
I think it's a conversation worth having. If, if we look at the future of housing in our community. If, if the land values keep skyrocketing, if, if is a key word. Then where can older adults who might want to stay in the community live? I mean, historically, and I've seen it over all my years here in, in West Windsor. People live here, except for some, the people, some of the people present. They live here, they educate their kids, they leave the community. Because, you know, they, they don't want to continue to pay the taxes. They use the community for the education of their kids, and now they've moved on. And what, what, what we're seeing is that, that really affects the character of a, of a community if, if generally, the older generation is not present. It affects the town and town life, town engagement. Engagement with all the, the different volunteer groups we have in town. So I, I don't have a conclusion, whereas Linda might, but I don't think, I, I think it's, it's a conversation and topic of discussion our community should have. And, and then we could see what people value and what they don't value. Another, another characteristic is that with the diversity of, of the international character of, of our community, there are populations where they, the older generation stays with the nuclear family. And an ADU can sort of address that possibility too, in that situation. So I just say it's a conversation worth having.
And, and the third characteristic of our out there as well, because when I think of ADUs, I think of two of the things that you just brought up, right? People that are aging in place, they want to stay in the community, they don't necessarily want as large of a home, or quite frankly, they're not capable of taking care of a larger home. The second group would be, they get extended family. You know, families that, you know, don't follow the nuclear family model. And then third would be, kids are going to get out of college. So you go away for college, you come back, looking at some of the rental prices, housing prices in West Windsor, this surrounding area. I'm sure I'm preaching the choir right here, but it's, it's expensive place to live. So potentially having that additional space for young adults who are still living in the community, but they don't necessarily want to be living immediately adjacent to mom and dad, separation. So those are kind of the three target ideas that we have for these ADUs, these accessory dwellings.
I mean, it's, it's an important conversation to have. Princeton did that a few years ago, so we can talk to them.
That's a model to look at.
Right, right.
On how they handled it.
Yeah, but I mean, I spoke to the, we have to be very careful. I spoke to the mayor, and people are misusing the original intent of what the ADU was meant to be, so.
How do you regulate that?
Yeah, yeah.
What it was meant to be and what it really is.
What it turned out.
Or two different things.
Yeah, what it turned out to be, because a lot of people, they're having second thoughts about, but they have done it, so we can learn from it.
Exactly.
What would be the difference if you, you say they want a separate living unit, but you talk about the aging population. You're better off being a part of that initial building as opposed to building another building outside where you have the care right next to you. I mean, the younger population, maybe I can see that a little bit, but you can still put a little mother-in-law apartment.
During COVID, I did hear some reports about certain retirement areas and/or convalescent care areas. So I would not be surprised if there were some homeowners that would rather have their parents live closer to home with, you know.
Well, having had that experience, it's nice to have your.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Aging population within your own home or attached to your home.
Well, you can make it, the ADU is only for family members.
Right.
That way, and restrict it that way.
On two separate families.
And that's in the study, Sam, right? Yeah.
Is, did we, I know we talked about it, Dave, did we put it into study that it's only for family members, the ADU?
I could define.
It's on page 34. Sam. Page 34.
Yes, any family member.
If they get married.
Any, any family.
And they have a child.
Yep.
I mean, fingers can still.
Extended family.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, let him talk.
Yeah.
You wouldn't allow to say that ADU would only be for a network family, and it wouldn't let it out to somebody not her relatives.
That's what we're talking about.
Well, I mean. That's concerning, that's concerning.
It would have to be in an ordinance, it would have to be specified.
Would say it has to be related to the homeowner and his, not the local director to be known on.
Yeah, in my opinion, in my opinion, the municipality would be able to do that.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Allison, come to the mic, so we can hear you. No, well.
No, no, come to the mic so we can hear you.
Okay, Allison Miller, 41 Windsor Drive. First of all, the specific area where you're looking at ADUs. Before you do anything, talk to the people who live there and see how they feel about it. Second of all, are, do those areas have water and sewer?
Yes, they do.
Because they have to. And if you're going to think about ADUs anywhere else in the township. You have to make sure that the sewer capacity of the individual lines in that neighborhood could carry double the houses that are in. Because you have to assume that everyone will want an ADU, which they won't. But you can't say the first 12 people get ADUs and after that you can't have it. So you have to, I think this is a conversation that has to be had with the community at large about ADUs. Also, it's all very well to say you gotta be a member of the family, but who's going to police it? And of course, your children are going to pay you rent. So you're going to, or not.
Good luck getting money out of my kids.
But I, I know a lot of people who paid their parents rent, but and if, if it's the older generation who's going to move into the new house, are they going to pay rent? I mean, it's not easy to police this. It is a conversation that has to be township-wide. You have to make sure that individual areas have the sewer capacity. And perhaps you have to start out saying where, where would ADUs fit? And define it. And so people will know, my property is too, too small. And so other people will know my property is not. But no matter where you want to put. Okay, talk to the neighborhood, talk to the neighbors, and if they're really against it, don't do it.
Thank you. It's, ADUs are not unique to Dutchneck, that's a town-wide issue, I think, right?
Yeah, that's my point.
All we're looking at here is in Dutchneck, so we're not looking at the whole community as a whole, or doing analysis where we would allow that in the community.
I think it is a broader conversation, something like the council could do, yeah.
But not, not right now at this meeting.
Yeah, because you are, if you were to look at ADUs township-wide, you're right, it requires a lot more analysis and understanding of where.
Absolutely.
Actually go, that, for this study, we're looking at a very limited area.
And as Dave said, it's a study, it's a recommendation, there would have to be an ordinance that would have the, the, the council would have to agree to introduce to do that. So this is just the first step, it's a recommendation, that's all.
Okay, so what's, what page are you on, 34?
Yeah, that language regarding ADUs is all on page 34.
I had, Dave, I had a question regarding these proposed zoning districts in general. And that is, do all the properties you're identifying, where you're changing to a new zone, do those all conform to that new zone?
It's a great question. Generally speaking, they will conform more, right? So the properties that we're proposing to place into these zoning districts will be closer in conformance, they all won't conform. Because, did you get the?
I got the mosquito.
Thank you, yeah, so you was lying around there. They all, they all won't conform 100% because it's just an impossibility, right? Because we would have to really track the zoning district, almost specifically each property. So by doing these rezonings, a lot of these properties will become more in conformance, some of them will be in conformance, some of them will be closer in conformance. The idea is to get the zoning more into the existing developed pattern.
It's just my, my, my other concern is that if, I don't know, say for example, you rezone my house to a new zone. And now my, the old zone allowed me to do something that the new zone doesn't allow me to do. Now I have to go and ask for a barter or something like that, and that's an extra cost to me as the homeowner.
Absolutely, that's what we're, yeah, and that's what we're trying to avoid. So every rezoning recommendation that we're making, specifically regarding the bulk requirements, you're going to be getting closer in conformance.
All right, that's what I'm concerned about.
No, and that was, yeah, that was my concern as well, to make sure that we're not placing any properties. You know, the proverbial square peg in a rattle.
Because, you know, I mean, I could, I could see that, I could see it now, you know, it's like, you do that to my zone, and then I come in and I'm going to be yelling, screaming at you, you've resold.
They would be screaming at Sam more importantly.
I don't want Sam to, you know, to yell at Sam.
So you're saying, under your recommendations, there are no.
I wish this was your.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm talking over Sam, I'm sorry. You're saying that there are no properties that are going to be impacted negatively by these new zones?
No, no, no properties will be impacted negatively by these zones. So we made sure that whatever, and you'll see it more clearly, especially with the discussion of the R, sorry, the Dutchneck Handling Zoning District, some of the properties that we're including in there. But these properties will get more in conformance with zoning. Again, some of them, it's going to be impossible to encapsulate all of them as, you know, completely conforming, just because of how small some of them are. But if they were to be placed in a zoning district, like we're recommending here, the extent of not conformity will be reduced. So we made sure that every rezoning recommendation we're making in this, we're bringing those properties closer to conformance.
I have a question for you. Reducing the front yard setback from 50 to 30 and the side from 15. Reason for that is what? So everything's conforming?
Closer to conformance, yeah, so.
Because everything's below, around that now.
Exactly, yes.
Michael's comments are at the bottom of page 34, I want to provide context.
34.
Yeah.
Page 34.
And may I suggest, as part of the, the further analysis and discussion of the ADUs, that we get some, we talk to municipalities that have had experience at the enforcement side as well. Very easy for somebody to say, if in fact has to be a family member, yeah, they, you know, they're distant cousins, or they don't even say that, they're not related to us, but we've rented it.
Well, there could be a requirement for registration, and my office gets complaints from neighbors dropping the dime all the time. We don't look for problems, problem, call us and let us know, so.
Sam, part of my point though was, so when we find out that they're illegally in the house, they have a lease now. Or in fact, they've condominiumized, and they've, they've bought the unit. Man, just there issues here, I mean, no matter what, it's resolvable.
But, but remember, it's not a separate lot, it's not, it's, it's owned by the property owner who owns the main dwelling, it's not, you can't buy the ADA.
ADA.
Or the, the ADU, you can't buy it, it's accessory, it's a cottage in the back of the property or the home. So it's not for sale or anything like that.
Well, you can, you can condominiumize without, without getting any.
We can make that part of the deed restriction, so when they come in for their permit to build it, they have to file a deed restriction.
That's a very good point. Yeah, a way of handling that in terms of enforcement is through deed restriction.
Now, page 34, just at the bottom, permit accessory dwelling units, I think is something that needs to be researched more. I mean, we have been tending to conversation on this major thing that we're thinking about, and there's a lot of discussion, a lot of research. Finding out with the public, whether it's Dutchneck area or, or anywhere in town, it's a big issue. And just say permit accessory, allow it, to me, as a recommendation, I think it's just a lot more consideration. Why don't we say consider? Why don't we say instead of recommendations, saying permit.
Consider.
Consider.
Consider based on maybe broader.
Or just say consider allowing accessory units.
For accessory dwelling units.
And then some, maybe something that.
Other than permit.
You know, bait for further discussion on broader analysis, something to.
I don't even know if you need to put that in there, Mike, because all we're talking about is Dutchneck in particular, on those properties on that. If the mayor wants the staff, if he wants us to look into allowing it, or if, if the community wants it town-wide, we can do that. We're, we're not talking about that with this study, we're just looking at these several lots here.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is only for the R2B.
Correct.
Only for the R2B.
But I would say consider rather than permit.
Yeah, yeah.
That sounds good.
That's a good compromise.
So, Dave, I'll ask one more question on this, and then maybe we can get beyond the ADU issue. But at the state. But, um, at the state level, at the state of New Jersey legislative level, are they dealing with this in relation to the communities in the state?
There have been, and I have not checked for about a month and a half or so, uh, but there have been some draft pieces of legislation permitting ADUs throughout New Jersey.
Throughout every zoning district, too?
Essentially, yeah, well, throughout every residential zoning district. Uh, I don't know how far they've gone, quite frankly.
I mean, that's just yet another consideration, folks, of this issue.
Exactly, but it's, there has been draft legislation, um, for the next meeting, I think we'll try to find that, bring it in, just to show you what's kind of cooking in the state level. Uh, again, they haven't really gone that far, but that discussion has stuff, like, the discussion has happened on the state level.
Because, I mean, there are west coast communities, uh, cities like Portland and Seattle, that have pretty much said carte blanche, any residential district, this can happen.
Yes.
Am I right on that?
Oh, yes, yes, there's been, uh, uh, nationwide talk among some planners about eliminating single-family zoning, and it's happened in some urban areas like Portland, Oregon.
So, let's, this is a bar for me to use, yes, you have a point.
And I don't really want to move on, but just what I want to make on the ADUs, whether that could take into consideration, uh, the inferior coverage, now for 12, possibly extended driveway, because that will affect the coverage, according to that, that would impact all the surrounding.
Yeah, I, I would agree, so typically, if you're gonna have that accessory dwelling unit, you're gonna have to have some, we'll call it wiggle room at that driveway. Uh, I wouldn't recommend at this time to increase the improvement coverage in the R2B districts. Um, so whatever you can fit with that existing improvement coverage, that's all you get, and you don't get any additional allowable improvement coverage for that ADU.
And that would be in the ordinance?
It, it can either be in the ordinance, or if it's not specifically identified in the ordinance, you would just rewind the underlying improvement coverage in the R2B district. So if the R2B district establishes improvement coverage of 17% or 20, I think it's actually 20%, then you would just rewind that.
Andrew had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you pass the poll.
Um, yeah, one thing I do ask, I know there was a lot of thing where Dave said "we", and I'm not quite sure whether "we" referred to your planning firm, us, uh, did you? As far as I know, and I know Allison spoke on this, there's no groundswell of request from any of these people to add this particular extra house in the back.
For these particular properties, no, but there's not a day that doesn't go by that I get phone calls from people living in the community who want to have, um, a cottage for elderly parents or something like that. Literally, all the time, we get phone calls from them.
And that does become a matter of, if we're getting these, um, is that changing the entire, uh, culture, uh, design of the neighborhood if we start essentially putting two houses on a piece of property? Uh, these particular pieces of property, there would be a lot more traffic coming in, and, you know, that would have to be considered, and I find it very, very difficult to believe that there would not be a problem, like, if you had a relative living there, the relative now leaves, a lot of the kids, believe it or not, don't want to live with, with us. Um, and now there's an empty house out there that somebody is now, uh, can't use, and there's Airbnb, and I would find it very difficult to believe that somebody wouldn't be Airbnb-ing, uh, you know, letting people live there, and I, and also, when you come to relatives, the definition really has to, uh, has to not extend, because I know a lot of people who say, this is my cousin, but nobody can ever figure out what the actual relation is. And I don't, I don't see, um, uh, you know, Sam going out and doing DNA tests on people. So I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. We have enough issues now where people say, hey, we don't have enough people to go out and check on this and check on that, and I have a complaint, and, and this neighbor, and this one's got 42 people living in the house. So we do have to, we do have to, one, make sure this is something that the people in the area actually want.
And, yeah. I mean, this is, this is a Dutchneck planning study, so as was suggested, I mean, we just completely diverted and started talking on ADU, nobody's going to permit ADU tomorrow. So it's getting hijacked by ADU discuss, as was suggested, just say, consider permitting, and then that will be a separate conversation, let's not get this study hijacked by.
I'm just feel that this sort of gets put in there and it gets stayed.
No, no, it's not happening tomorrow, and this is just, just, just put consider there, and then we will worry about the process to use whether, as I have said, I mean, Princeton didn't have good experience with that, so before we do anything, let's not hijack this study with all that discussion tonight.
All right, as, you know, nobody's sending a, um, ADU, whatever, um, ordinance to, uh, to council next week, so.
Two weeks, Andrea, it'll be up at the desk in two weeks.
Yeah, and, and we won't, we won't say where it's going, but, um, okay, thank you.
Let's move on.
Just, what about evaluate rather than consider, which, if it's evaluate, that means this further study is, it's gonna be done.
Yeah. Eventually.
Evaluate rather than consider. Because, because that suggests that this, for the studies, that it's gonna be done.
I have a little extra space on my property, maybe I'll take it down. Yeah, I need to, yeah, I gotta talk to you about that.
But we can, we can soften up the language to focus more on an evaluation on accessory dwelling units in this area, specifically in this area, not township-wide.
Right, right, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, page 35, any, anything going on page 35?
Yeah, this is really the, the largest rezoning area, um, and what we're trying to do in this Dutchneck Hamlet zoning district is encapsulate the core of the Dutchneck area, so a lot of the properties that were not conforming in lot size, a lot of the historic properties, really focus on the intersection of South Mill Road and Village Road, and extending further closer to Dutchneck.
36, anything?
And this is what I would also throw in that recommendation I had earlier about potentially sliding front yard setback requirements or side yard setback requirements. Probably focusing more on front yard setback requirement, that deals less with fire code than your side yard setback. Um, we'll include that on page 36, that consideration, that discussion.
I think what you're saying within the Dutchneck Hamlet district on page 36, establish pre-existing two-family dwellings as a permitted use, doesn't be grandpa and the.
Exactly, yeah, so we wouldn't be allowing for new two families. So if there's a single-family property currently in that zoning district, and they came up to Sam and said, hey, we want to knock ours down, build a two-family one, that would not be allowed.
What if they subdivided the existing dwelling into two separate units?
They couldn't do that.
No, they wouldn't be able to do that.
They would not.
No, they would not be able to do that. Uh, this is just looking at those existing two families, uh, and making those pre-existing non-conforming uses permitted, so that way if they do want to add, say, a mudroom in the back, or a bedroom, or whatever that is, um, they wouldn't have to go over an expansion of a non-conforming use variance.
The grandfathered-in properties are just gonna continue to remain.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be grandfathered in anymore, it would be permitted by right. That exists as of the date, whatever code, whenever we adopt the code to bring this new district into place.
Yeah, the township did something very similar with veterinary clinics, so in the R2 districts, which refers back to, I believe, the R1C district, we permitted, or the township permitted, veterinary, veterinary clinics that existed prior to the date of January 1st, 2000. So if you were a veterinary clinic that existed prior to that date, you were considered permitted use. So if you wanted to improve your property, you still might require some bulk variances, but as long as you weren't, you know, triggering a floor area ratio variance or height variance of more than 10%, you would appear in front of the planning board. But if you wanted to build a new one in that district, you would have to go in front of the zoning board for the one use variance. So that's what we did with veterinary clinics, we're looking to do the same thing with two-family houses in this specific zoning district. So not a lot of new ones, but just make those existing ones permitted.
Hey, um, I have a question for you. Um, on the bottom of, page 36, table 10, max floor area ratio proposed is 20, right?
Yes, 20%.
But the median is 15. So is 20, is, I don't know, 20 seems like normal for most, uh, neighborhoods, most housing. But is it too large for these sized lots, based on the median being 15?
Well, the reason I picked 20% is also due to the existing median, right? And I know this is gonna kind of get me mad, nerd talk, and I apologize for that, but the median value versus the median value, the median value basically splits all of your FAR numbers.
Yeah.
Right in half, right? So if you have 20 FARs that are identified in the neighborhood, half of those are below 26.3%, the other half, 26, above that. So, I'm sorry, uh.
15.
15, yes. Um, so the reason we picked 20% is to go a little bit above that 16% and allow just a little bit more flexibility and allow for a little bit more incentive for those pre-existing houses.
So basically, the houses that are below, you give them a little leeway in proving their, you know, FAR. The people at above, they're already above.
Exactly, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, yeah, question, all these statistics, does it, does that include the two lots that she was referring to in Hunter's Run?
For floor area ratio.
No, for everything, like minimum, uh, averages and means and medians, because that will move it significantly to one side, because those two lots are a lot bigger than every other lot in that area.
It probably, it probably would, yeah.
So if you take the two lots, the numbers would change, maybe substantially in some cases.
We can run those numbers, if we take out those two-family dwellings, we can run the numbers and see what that floor area ratio would look like.
Or you come up with a specific standard for the existing two families in that zone.
Yes, yeah.
Page 36. I see, I see daylight, uh, I don't understand, hope it's not a train coming. Okay, page 37. Yes, yes, please, uh, step up. Up down ADUs.
Uh, no, actually, it's not. Um, Allison Miller, 41 Windsor Drive, um, I put this where you first mentioned, uh, Windsor Chapel and the idea of, um, open space cluster. Now, uh, first of all, I think this is a great idea, and I think this is the place to put, um, houses on smaller lots, but I can't figure out how many dwelling units would be able to be put in there, because all of them, I assume it's all sewn and watered, but all of them would come out one driveway, and that could be a traffic problem. So how many dwelling units do you think there would be?
That is a great question, and the answer is, I don't know. Um, and the reason for that is, I really wanted to gauge how the board felt, whether they had any potential interest in that type of development. And if they did, if they thought that that might be something worth investigating, then the next step would be working out some sort of concept plan to lay it out and see what that could potentially look like. But I didn't want to necessarily go through that step and go through, quite frankly, the expense without hearing the board say, you know what, that's a decent idea. If the board said, you know what, we hate that idea, then it would have been all for nothing. So that is an announcement we would definitely want to do.
Okay, because if the board hates the idea, then there still can be development there, but just not cluster development.
Yep.
And not saving open space.
Exactly.
How many dwelling units could you get without the cluster? It should be about the same, it, it would be the same.
It would be a lot less.
Be a lot, well, I think that the, I think the board has to consider, and they have to know the nu, if they're interested in cluster at all, they have to know the.
And, and if, if they are, it, there's a recommendation in here, and if we want to move forward on it, then we would, Dave would work on some conceptual drawings, we would bring them through the board and get feedback on the density that they want, and we'd create the ordinance based upon that.
That's right, you could pick the density and go from there. Anyway, that's my comment.
We don't, we don't have to, Linda, we, we don't, we can just put it in place in the master plan, and if somebody, if Windsor Chapel wants to sell, and if they do, I don't know if they do.
No, nobody's approached.
Nobody's approached us.
Do they know this is in here?
No, no. The point is, Linda, it's a vision document. In order for it to become law, it has to be an ordinance on that. It could stay on the books in here, and then a potential developer could come in and say, we want to come in with a concept plan, and we want to show you what the cluster subject would look like. If you don't like the number of units or the size, you just say, no, we're not gonna, we're not interested in rezoning it to that density, or that lot size, or that FAR.
What about buying it for open space?
It's not on our open space acquisition plan, so if we were to buy it, we couldn't get any supplemental funding from the state or the county.
Should we put it on? Personally, the school ought to buy it, because whenever they have a function, their parking is in my backyard on that, that piece of property.
Or, or Dr. Adlehold could buy it, yep.
Yep. The school district ought to consider it for parking.
Yeah, I would, um, maybe add something about that possibility of buying a space.
It's too small, and it's not on any list right now, right?
But how do you get things on a list?
The point, the point of the matter is, is that it doesn't, on the list, oh, and it means we get additional supplemental funding from other governmental agencies, that's all that means on that. And plus, the property has a, a house on it and a barn, that's the chapel. We, I don't think we'd want to purchase that, so it would have to be subdivided out of that.
Well, I don't know, it, all I'm saying is, whatever the possibilities are for starting to talk about this, I don't even know if they want to do anything, so.
No, absolutely, they might not, now, we've never been approached by anybody, but the idea was, um, to be a little bit, you know, forward-thinking, what hap, i- i- if you look at an aerial map of that neighborhood, Dutchneck, the most green space you're gonna see is located essentially on their property, right there. So that's really their most available piece of property, in my opinion, in Dutchneck. Um, right now, the regulations, quite frankly, are a little ambiguous. So that site is located in the R2 district. The R2 district establishes the same conditional uses as the R1C district, as modified here, and and the R1C district does talk about cluster development, so. Maybe, but there's also minimum requirements there, so it might be, it, it's a little ambiguous as to whether, right now, cluster development is permitted there. The idea is, if we do want to have a cluster development there, come up with a density limitation, come up with a minimum or maximum lot size, floor area ratio, come up with those standards specifically geared to that area, uh, as opposed to something a little bit more generic, or, you know, waiting to see what happens in the site in the future.
See, I don't know, I don't know if they, that we, it's a lot of expenses to do that. No, the chapel wanted, yeah, the chapel wants to sell, developer may come in, want to put up bigger homes. It's something that may be smaller homes, but is that gonna be all affordable housing with the smaller homes? Because you think they're gonna be really less expensive homes?
No, we would, we would establish a set aside of 20%, so they wouldn't all be affordable.
Or we could say, like we've done elsewhere, the development going in on Bear Brook Road is where they don't have to provide, uh, or, not on Bear Brook Road, but there's the option where you don't have to provide on-site affordable units, you contribute to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, like we've done for some other areas where there were some apartments, and there were a minimum number of apartments, and they wouldn't be cost-effective to put an affordable unit in there, they contribute to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Well, I would talk to them and see if there's any interest.
I would leave it alone, this is just for the board to consider if this is a different type of housing stock that you want to see in the community potentially.
It's totally different than what's there now. So you'd be changing the feel of that whole area. Generally, the school gets.
Again, which we could potentially control through density controls as well. Um, you know, it's that identifying the number of properties or dwellings that we permitted there, or on any type of use like that.
Consider it senior housing only, and age restricted too, you can do something like that if you wanted to. Consider it senior housing only, and age restricted too, you can do something like that if you wanted to.
Could potentially as well.
Similar to the A D U discussion, maybe we need to change that verb in that last point, number thirty-seven, on page thirty-seven. Instead of using the verb establish, which sort of has a tone of, it's a done deal. Maybe use the word like explore, or, you guys can help me with language here.
I think Jerry's the recommended evaluate before.
Eval, or evaluate, evaluate's a good word, yeah.
And even put in about potentially age-restricted housing, you know, that way.
Consider. Consider's another verb, just not, I think the verb establish sounds more like it's a done deal. On a decision that has been made.
I would agree with that.
So you say small lot cluster or age-restricted housing? I think to call the, at least start drawing up a plan for what we want to see there. You're all almost saying to somebody, well, this property, if it's for sale, here's what you can do, and they're going to look at it and say, oh, dollars, why?
In, in, in most cases, we wouldn't do it. A developer would come in, post escrow, come in with a concept plan, and work with the board on the layout, the density, all that stuff.
But I thought you were talking about, maybe we can do a layout and see what the board feels about it, but.
No, I don't, I, I wouldn't recommend doing that.
Especially if we're saying the word evaluate, then I think that does get us out of having to figure out some of the specifics and, you know, just consider it in the future.
Well, there are a lot of restrictions, as Allison said, a lot of considerations, like that one driveway out.
Oh, yes.
Across from school would be absolutely ridiculous. The traffic there is unbearable in school mornings and evenings.
Yeah, I, I.
You can't add to that.
Yeah.
There would have to be another way out.
I think evaluates the key word.
Should, should the word establish be, um, should we change establish on all of these bullets? To consider, uh, explore?
I, I think they work for a lot of the other ones, and such. I think we're much farther along. Okay. I think we're much farther along on the other ones.
Other ones, yes.
I think establish is appropriate.
What's the definition of public and semi-public service facility?
So, uh, we thought I had a definition of semi-public, quite frankly.
Have it somewhere.
Yeah, I thought I had somewhere.
Yeah, you do.
Um, you know, that's one of the recommendations to come up with a definition of semi-public. Essentially, semi-public, imagine a firehouse number one. That's not necessarily a public building, it is not owned by the township. However, it is owned by the fire company who serves a public purpose. So when we talk about quasi-public or semi-public, that would be an example of something that would be semi-public.
And David, you, your explanation is on the top of page thirty-seven.
I thought I wrote something. There we go.
Inclusive of firehouses also be identified as a community?
Yes. And some of the examples would be, uh, police stations, fire stations, uh, public health facilities and emergency operations. Yep.
Okay, and, uh, page thirty-eight, R thirty, we're doing, uh, district rezoning.
Yeah, so this is a, a smaller little property, again, not necessarily in Dutchneck, but included it in the study, because if we did it and we made the zoning recommendations, this would be a lot with its own zoning district and everything around it would be a different one. This is located in the Dutchneck Estates neighborhood. The rest of that zoning district is in the R thirty district. Sorry, development. Ne- neighborhoods just sound so more, sounds friendlier, but, um, it's in the Dutchneck development. I'm sorry, Dutchneck Estates development. So our recommendation would just be to rezone it from the R two district to the R thirty district, which is in keeping with the rest of that development, very similar to what we're recommending for Hunter's Run.
It's the wrong street address.
What was that?
It's the wrong street address to begin.
Oh, it was.
And that's the wrong one. I know where the property is, but that's not it.
Yes.
Okay, you'll fix it.
That's a Pinewood Court property.
Yes, uh, yeah, Pinewood Court. We'll correct that block a line.
Okay.
So you're saying put that in?
Okay.
Put that in the R thirty district, because that's where the rest of that development is. So I don't know how it got left out, or why it got left out, so.
Is my correction?
Okay.
One thing, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Page thirty-seven, when you talk about Board of Education transportation building, nevertheless recommends that additional buffering be provided to the site in order to mitigate any potential net, negative impacts on the adjoining properties.
Yeah.
There's already negative. How do we encapsulate that and encourage that to be done? Only by ordinance?
Well, I don't know, that's a Jerry question, because it's a Board of Education. I don't know if they have to, if we were, it's an existing facility now. If you recreate a zoning ordinance that said they had to put in a berman fence or whatever else, would they be exempt because they're, uh, school? Or would they be exempt because of pre-existing?
I mean, if they came back, if they came in, they wanted it with site plan amendments to, to that facility, then I think we can, we can address it.
So it would have to be by ordinance then, Sue.
But doesn't the school have, it supersede whatever our regulations? I mean, they've commented with applications before, we made suggestions, and they don't have to do it. So how can we enforce that?
Well, I mean, but we have, we have the standards that apply to schools that the schools are bound by, the Board of Education is bound by, you know, in terms of lot sizes, setbacks, et cetera, et cetera, where they can have this, uh, schools, et cetera.
Well, isn't buffering part of that?
Yeah, I would say so.
And they never did comply, I mean, we asked for this years ago. And we were assured it was going to happen, and it never happened. So we have to ordinance it?
When it, I, I think it was part of the Dutchneck Presbyterian Church, it might have been the chapel or something. I know it changed properties, it went, it went to the town, I, I'm trying to think who, was it? Nobody here, other than me. I'm trying to think how, it, it went to the town, and the town turned it over to the school district for some reason. How the town got it, I don't remember.
Okay, no, so over there. It was a lot right here to go.
Yes, yes.
The library. County.
Yep.
Nineteen sixty-eight?
That was, that was where the.
No, you're, you're, you're confusing that with the Old Town Hall that had the trailers on it, that was the library. So the trailers weren't attached to the Old Town Hall?
The chapel is there now, it's now the Board of Ed. One of the libraries, one of the police workroom.
Yep.
Was, uh, yeah, slumming school first. Then we sold it, then they sold it to, um, town for a while.
Town, no.
And then we, we rented it out to the Board of Ed and the Board of Ed Board.
Right.
The Board of Ed is still in the process of bodying the others first.
And when they came before us telling us they were going to create a transportation district, these were things that they were supposed to do, and they never did. And we're in the middle of a residential district.
Okay. Next time they come through the board, we'll ask.
Well, no, the question is, is, can, you can, can we force them to do anything?
We can't.
So it's, it's just the mayor talking to Dr. Atterhold to see whether or not they would put something in there to do that.
And I've talked to him before, and I thought, nowhere, maybe he'll do better.
I would be better.
That's pressure.
I would be very grateful if you would do better.
Okay.
And maybe Dan can recommend some additional buffering?
Well, there's a lot of recommendations, is to get the school district to agree to do what they're going to do. I mean, you're limited there, because the parking lot goes up pretty much to the lot line. The only thing they could really do would be to put up a, a large fence or something.
It's what we asked for, and it never happened.
Okay.
Page forty, appendix A. Could, could you please supply a key for the reader who's not a landing board person, of what a red box means?
Exactly, yeah.
And also, um, whereas we, we know what FAR is, but, uh, you might spell out impervious coverage last column.
I will, I'm going to make a little note on the bottom, just because it won't fit in that little.
Do a smaller, I, i- i- important coverage? I, the reader is not going to.
But I'll, yeah, I'll make a little keynote in the bottom.
Yeah.
You can, you can also change it from, um, horizontal to vertical?
Yeah, try to make everything look crazy.
Okay, so you'll figure it out, okay. Um, so everything else is, um, appendices, uh, maps?
I got, uh, issue one, uh, forty-three, uh, with that, uh, firehouse. Uh, and not just the, the name of it.
Yes.
Uh, you have two tables with the same label. I'm just wondering, I mean, after I looked at it, I realized that maybe both of these tables should really be kind of like a one table.
No, that's, uh, that's the mislabeled table. Table nine should really be Veterans Park.
Should be what?
Veterans Park.
Veterans Park?
Yep.
Okay, good. So, because in the, I caught that, the table of contents, because it was a duplicate name, and I'm saying to myself, something, something's wacky going on.
Table of contents needs to be looked at also, I guess.
Oh, that'll get updated at the end.
Okay. Okay, anything else on the appendices, maps, so on? Nope, so good, good work, uh, we got through the documents.
Just a quick, I think on page eleven? Page eleven?
Yes.
I see, there was an error. And the last one, you said twenty-twenty-five. Why you said twenty-twenty-five? Year.
Oh, I, I split up the years in increment to twenty-five, just to make it equal the bar chart.
Oh, I see.
Yes, yeah. I mean, we can, we can make it two thousand twenty-three.
I think, I think it needs to end at this year, I don't think it should go out to twenty-five.
So maybe twenty-three?
Unless, unless you're completing it in twenty-five.
Oh, I'm making, I'm making a prediction.
Yeah, maybe.
So it's, it's, when, when does this get approved?
Yes.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Uh, question, um, in terms of the general study area, when you went to Dutchneck, what, this is, um, and then, so what would you try to, to find a background? So now you would think, what are we going to study for Dutchneck? How to then, um, go back to the answer?
All right, so to answer the first question, uh, based on two different things. One, we were basing that off of the delineation that was in the two thousand twenty plan, right? So we wanted to make sure that land use plan category that's identified in that plan matched up with Dutchneck. But you're right, there's really no firm delineation. Uh, very generally speaking, we looked at roughly the Sartre to the north, which was by Country Squire, really those large houses. To the west, I wanted to carry it out to the park phase two. Uh, to the south, to the mid-block of South Mill Road, and then to the east, Dutchneck School, Dutchneck Estates. In the land use plan and, and the township has a map of all these different developments, uh, the park phase two ended roughly where we ended that study area. So that's, that's why we picked there. And the lots were largely conforming to what I said, so, so, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, the more you, yes. But you're right, I mean, I mean, there's no, if you look at a historic preservation element, you'll find properties that are identified in the Dutchneck section that are kind of scattered throughout, even some that are further than here. Uh, but we just needed to set that study lit area somewhere, and it looked like further west you went out, the more lots were conforming, so we really wanted to focus more on that. But that is a, it's a, yeah. It's an ambiguous delineation.
So is there a reason you didn't go all the way to Reed Drive down Village Road East? Down Village Road West?
Yeah, we wanted to keep it kind of contained up until the park phase two, and also the further west, it just seemed like those lots were largely conforming.
It, your lot is going, where the old Reed House is, where the old Reed House is, is a conforming lot. So that's why we didn't include it in the study area, because it conforms to zoning. It's not an historical study, it's a land use study.
It's a two, two-family dwelling.
But it's a two-family dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
We had a lot of interaction from the public, but if anybody from the public would like to step up and speak on anything else, please step up.
Okay, please.
I'm just curious, what's the study cost for that?
The house that I'm talking about is the last one, that's almost Reed Drive. It's a double house. It's a non-conforming lot, I understand, but it is a dub, it's one of the double houses that you, you have two double houses in Dutchneck, and that happens to be one of them.
So it's a two-family?
It's a two-family house. Five forty Village Road and five forty-two Village Road West. And the house is the oldest house in Dutchneck. Actually, uh, Paul Leggiti told me to say that if I had a chance, it's probably the oldest house in West Windsor.
Okay. And there are three two-family houses.
The question is, do you want to extend to do that house?
Right.
I would need it to, where, what do you think?
What was the, I'm sorry, what was the address?
It's, it's next to number one. It's on the west side of number one.
It's right next, next to it.
One of three drive, hold it, sir.
That property, if anyone?
If, if, if the board would like to include that piece of property?
It has a lot number seventeen, a lot of different things that would be.
Uh, we can revise the reports to include that property.
I think it should, because it's right next to.
We can include it, but it's.
Okay, uh, this gentleman had something to say.
Yeah, I don't know the answer now, but I can find out. What are, what are the gentleman charged?
Taxpayer money.
Yep. Everything is taxpayer money.
Yes.
Well, um, I don't know if it wasted, because if I not, if I not reviewing it, could end up in costing and wasting.
You have it.
It's okay, you heard me. Anyway, um, so we got through the document. Thank you, everybody, for input and, and work.
Did we decide to?
Uh, yes.
Yes, yes, we do, yeah.
Yes, it's right next door, so it should be included.
Okay, right there.
Um, so, so, um, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to.
So moved.
Okay, second.
Second, everybody has on their test for the next video.